Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 19th, 2025 work session of the Board of Education of Charles County. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the infinite judges of all.
Good afternoon again. Welcome to our millions. Standing room only as always. No, I was kidding. All right, let me start where I always begin with our mission. The mission of Charles County Public Schools is to provide an opportunity for all school-aged children to receive an academically challenging, quality education that builds character, equips for leadership, and prepares for life in an environment that is safe and conducive to learning. If you all will allow me a moment to introduce our incoming student member of the board, please pronounce your last name for me. Munachi?
Obinala.
Obinala. Munachi Obinala, welcome.
Welcome, Munachi.
And thank you so very much for joining us. Next up, we will begin with the fiscal year 26 budget update. I believe that is Ms. Acton and Ms. Fisher-Davis.
Yes.
Also known as Money Money. All right. The dream team.
So I will actually, good afternoon, Board members. Yes, I will actually get this started. We wanted to first, as our team brings you the latest information and data in terms of our budget request and ask, I wanted to just put this conversation into context around what are some of the implications of reductions that we've had in funding and resources this year and in previous years. The board kind of asked me to summarize what it means. This year in this budget, you saw that one of the things that we did is we trimmed some of our staffing ratios, 4th, 5th grade, and then 6th through high school. And the focus, the way we go about doing that, I know I talked about it a little bit at the last board meeting, but I just wanted to emphasize that the way we do that is we wanted to make sure that when we bring a budget to the board, we internally have gone through a process of prioritizing, streamlining, and also ensuring that we have already made some adjustments to our spending that prioritize the resources that we have and maximize the resources that we have. So when you see the staffing allocations, the ratios there, it is intended to do the least impactful damage, to be honest. We believe that the staffing realignments that we've done may take positions that are not filled with full-time employees. So the impacts on the schools will be felt, but it will not be as deep of a felt as we know that it could be seeing the financial landscape. So we go through a whole process where we look at seats, butts in seats, if you will, and we try to do sort of the least amount of damage. But I have to be honest with you that there is some staffing implications as a result of fundings, year after year, kind of getting smaller and smaller. You also notice that when we had the COVID relief funding from the federal government, we were able to expand a lot of our summer programs right after we came back from the pandemic to in person, and we needed to. Lots of supports, lots of learning that needed to continue through the summer, and many more students impacting that we had seen in previous years. That funding has gone away now, and so what the board did is, in the last couple of years, it built every year a little bit of funding so that we could continue to run summer programs. However, there were some funding that, as the federal dollars went away, we are no longer able to afford transportation for middle and high school students or costs for original credit for students that are going to take a class for original credit in the summer. We've prioritized the funding that the board put aside in previous years to continue to do the summer work, and you also see in this budget some additional funding to make sure that those students who need additional supports during the summer or need courses to move ahead because they did not pass them throughout the school year have an opportunity to do so. We also narrowed and narrowed the scope of what we are purchasing, both instructional materials, resource materials, and we prioritize what those areas are. And I think that's important to note because what is important to understand is that sometimes under difficult financial moments, we need to focus and limit our options so that we also can manage the impact of our options. So there are some programs and licenses that we have sort of narrowed down the focus on. And then with some of the funding in previous years, we prioritize a lot of building capacity of staff. And now we're maximizing that because some of those contracts are going away because we don't have funds to continue them, but we built internal capacity so we can do more of the train-the-trainer models moving forward. And then lastly, I will leave you with, there is going to be implications on changes or cuts to federal funds that are coming that I believe we're going to see more of in the coming months that we haven't quite yet seen. As I mentioned to the board previously, we received a letter from the federal government about COVID relief funding ending, and we had done a good job of expending those dollars so we didn't have a lot of sort of leftover dollars that we still had to spend, but it did cause us to pause some of the professional learning that some of our teachers were engaged in. So I do want to just let you know that unfortunately, this discussion around maximizing our resources and thinking about our resources will have further implications even after, I believe, the board approves the final, final budget in June because we are going to see more implications coming down the pike from the federal dollars. So with that, Karen and Sheri are here to provide you an update on where we are with the discussions locally from the information that we know from the county commissioners' budget.
One second, Dr. If you could, please, just to address something you raised, a question I know we've all gotten and seen on social media about the decision around the charging for original credit versus students that I know, you know, we've had, you know, similar discussions versus students that may be retaking a class and the thought behind that. Because candidly, many parents felt it was unfair to charge for original credit, but if a student had to retake a class, there would be no charge. Could you expand on that?
Yeah, so there are multiple opportunities even throughout the school year where students can take additional courses online if they don't have eight classes a day that they can take for original credit. So when we prioritize the resources, we looked at students who needed to have certain classes that they may not have been able to pass during the school year and prioritizing those resources because during the school year, and also during the school year, there are many students who take advantage also of the recovery throughout the school year. So the numbers, we've lowered that number by having opportunities for students to, like, let's say they failed first quarter, they can work throughout the year to make up that first quarter throughout the second, third, and fourth so they don't have to take summer classes. So we've narrowed the number of students who have to take those classes, and because we also offer an option to take original credits, certain original credits for the first time during the school year, we then narrowed on that third population, students who still struggled throughout the year and just needed to be able to take that class so they could move forward.
Okay, especially, I guess, those that probably needed to graduate and...
Yes, and I, and I'm sorry, Ms. Morley, I jumped over the one-to-one devices. Families received a letter, maybe from me or from the school system. You know, the one-to-one devices came to public education, honestly, because of the pandemic. It was very much federally funded, and a lot of school systems, not just Charles County, have had quite a bit of difficult time maintaining those one-to-one devices, given all of the costs associated with maintaining and keeping them in working, in proper working conditions. So we sent, that was one of the narrowing of scope. We definitely want to continue to use technology, and we need to, in our teaching and learning every day, but we are going to be bringing a more focused way in which we minimize the damages to our devices. We heard loud and clear from our early childhood parents that they are not too happy with the amount of screen time in early grades, and we have made adjustments so that we also take this opportunity to lower that amount of screen time for young, our youngest learners, K pre-K to two. And we also heard from our secondary families, and we're going to start with high schools, that they want to bring their own devices back to the school system. Ms. Thompson, I think we've always had security concerns around that. That continues to be the case, but it is an opportunity to also hear the families that want to bring their own devices at the high school level to begin to do that. We'll assess how that looks at the high school level and maybe think about it in future years for the middle school level. And what I want parents to hear about this change is that there will always be an option that when your child needs a device at home to do a project or to do an assignment, there is a way that every child in CCPS has the opportunity to sign one out. So while we're doing a little bit of trimming around the edges, those opportunities of a student needing their device to do their assignment, every single school from 3rd grade up into high school, 12th grade, will have a process by which if I need a device to do a project, I'm able to sign it out, know that I have to take care of it, and I have to return it when I no longer need that device. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, Karen.
Yes, Ms. Acton, Ms. Fisher-Davis. Oh, did you, oh, yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I just had a quick question, too, just back to the summer school piece. Also, what I wanted to clarify for parents, too, is that we didn't really just choose to not pay or to have parents not pay for the summer school classes that are required. That's a law that we're not allowed to charge if the students need the class to graduate. So there was some confusion about that, you know, like, well, why would you make students who, you know, wanted to kind of take, you know, get themselves a little more advanced or take initiative, have, you know, have to pay, but then students who, you know, this perception is that they didn't apply themselves or whatever the case, which is not always the case.
It's like they're being rewarded.
But that they're being rewarded, exactly, but that our hands are kind of tied on that. So can you explain that, Dr. Morley?
Yes. So we are reverting back to charging for summer school fees that we used to charge for prior to the pandemic. That's a first statement. The second is that you're right, Ms. Kramer. I forgot to mention that there is a law that requires us to pay for students who have to take a class who failed it during the year. And the reason we have built in so many mechanisms for kids to take, to make up, like, if it's a marking period that they failed, or kids that want to advance to do so virtually or through another class throughout the year is because we definitely see interest in both ends of the spectrum. Students who don't necessarily want to come back for a whole summer and can make up that credit through this school year, as well as students who want to take their health credit online and want to accelerate because they want to open that. And so we decided to do that in the school year, and we are required by law to have to pay for any student who failed a class to do so at high school. And I cannot recall when the law was passed. It's been about three years.
Okay. I knew he would be on it.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Navarro. Appreciate that. I think that's an important clarification.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, Ms. Acton.
Good afternoon. So in preparation for our June board meeting, where we're hoping to have our FY '26 budget passed, we thought it would be helpful to share with you where we are right now with the numbers that we know. Unfortunately, we still don't have, you know, final numbers from the state, but hopefully they're not much changed from this. So what we're going to talk with you this evening about is the change from the original budget that you approved to what we believe now will have to be the budget based on the numbers that we are aware of. So as most everyone is aware of, we have a $14 million shortfall from the county to start with. We have also, we believe there's, could be another couple hundred thousand coming from the state, which is not a lot, but we'll see if that holds. But we also, in this presentation here, have increased our fund balance by 5.5 million, which brings it to about 10 million. So in the budget that we're going to show you in June, you'll have a $10 million fund balance in there to balance it. So that means that, you know, revenue is decreased by 8.4 million. The teacher's pension, which was in our original presentation to you, after that, it was clarified that the county has to pay that 2.5 million, so we took that off. We also had neglected to add the additional funding that goes to Posota. So each year, as we get additional funding there, per pupil amount will also increase. So there has to be a mandatory cost increase for Posota. We're estimating at this point it would be $350,000. So then the next group of items, we presented this in a different way to you than what we ended up sharing with the commissioners to make it more clear what we were asking for. So in last year's budget, if, to refresh your memories, we had decreased, we had used some of our funding that wasn't going to be needed last year because we still had ESAR funding, and what that amounted to was our extended learning opportunity. We had decreased that, and then we had funded these items. So to be a little more clear in our presentation, we changed the presentation to say we need to refund the extended learning opportunity wages, which is our summer school wages. And then right below that, so that's 2.1 million, and below that you see 938,000, which is the transportation. So that was taken out of our budget, and we need to put it back in our budget. And then there was also a decrease in our short-term disability of 300,000 that we needed to put back in there. So that's what those items are. So then you also, the other change would be our collective bargaining assumptions. Everyone is probably aware, we had 13.2 million. Now we're estimating about 6 million. So we've had to go back to the table on that. There's a change on the second page as you slide through. We had an accounting payroll manager position in there, and we changed that to a director of finance position based on some needs in the accounting department. That's the 73,000 that you see there. We have 750,000 that we added for special education, non-public placements. As you may recall, at the last meeting, we had to increase our budget for special education. So we thought it would be prudent to add some additional dollars in the next year's budget so that we hopefully don't have to take out of fund balance for that, although we've increased fund balance to a certain extent on this budget. The changes of school names requires us to put some line item in there, $80,000 to change the names of a school for all of the signs and changes that they need to make. We've added 500,000 for our food service debt, and we've added 500,000 for technology equipment. As Dr. Navarro said, we are no longer going to be one-to-one, but there's still a need for additional computers. So that's what that line item is. And then on Margaret J. Thornton, you see a lot of minuses there, and what that is, is we took down our assumptions on what our hiring needs are going to be, not the number of positions, but the salaries that we will pay. You know, that could be low, it could be high, but we took then all down a little bit so that we could save some money on that end. So the end result on that is, you know, the total other budget change is 928,114, and that balances the budget with an 8.4 million dollar decrease in the revenue from our original presentation to you. Any questions? I mean, we are pretty concerned about going into this next year's budget. As Dr. Navarro said, you know, the federal funding that could be withheld or changed and the moving landscape for MSD and what they know from the federal government has us, you know, pretty concerned about where we're going to be. So the $10 million that we have on, that we have allocated on this budget for fund balance, I think is, you know, I'm always going to say that's a little risky because you're taking, that means every year from this point forward, you're going to have to set that aside for your budget. And as the board knows, we took 8 million out this year for unexpected needs. So, you know, we're in tight budget times, we keep saying that, and, you know, we need to be prudent about how we're spending it, and which is why we added some of the line items that you see here, like on the food service, to not have any budget there when we know we're going to have negative balances puts an undue strain on the system to try to balance the budget as we work through the year.
So Ms. Acton, you mentioned about the federal budget. If I'm not mistaken, that's roughly, what, 1%? Is that right, of our total budget?
So, yes, 1% of our total budget, but there are implications from the grant. So if something goes flat on the grant or if the grant goes away, we have to make a decision on whether we're going to somehow absorb that back into our budget.
Or just do away with whatever. And is that, I'm particularly concerned about the Title I schools. What specific concerns do you have around the possible reduction in federal funding? Or is it too soon to say?
So I think what I'm hearing is Title I is flat right now. There might be a small decrease. We're not really getting any additional information unless you've got something different, Kevin.
So the state's supposed to send it out next week, is what I heard, in that originally we thought it was going to be around 8 million dollars, and now we're hearing it might be less, around four, the cut to the, that we will receive.
Oh, it might be less of a cut. Okay, got you.
So the other concern with the titles is that we have people associated with this.
Absolutely. And a lot of Title I schools.
Yeah, and so if the services that we're providing with that grant money needs to continue in some fashion and the people need to be re-employed by us, so to speak, it would have to go into the operating budget to make up those deficits.
Yeah, and it's not just the salary, it's the benefits as well.
Correct.
So the worst it could possibly be...
Say, I don't know why you didn't just join us.
I don't know. The worst the Title I cuts could have possibly been was 15%. So we went ahead and we made a budget based on a 15% cut. So if we get less, then we'll be able to put money back onto the budget. But it will have a little impact on the amount of money the schools will be able to have to run additional programs in their building with their Title I budget.
Which for many of them, I know, it's staff, it's mental health services, yeah, that's huge. After school, thank you, yes. Ms. Smith, yes.
No, just wanted to tack on. So while Title I is kind of the behemoth when it comes to federal funds, there's also Title II Part A that deals with teacher professional development. There's Title III that supports our multilingual learners. There's Title IV Part A, which includes McKinney-Vento. So there's a multitude of kind of other funding streams. I mean, Title I is the major portion.
Right, but that's a great point.
But if there are sort of proportional cuts that are happening there, then how does that then cascade into all of the other title programs that will also impact LEAs and their ability to provide services?
Great point.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were thinking about the global picture of federal funds.
So we have, you know, we have over 100 employees that are funded with federal funds.
Significant.
It's over 100, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So in Title I, there are Title II that you spoke about, Title III, Title IV, we do not have any full-time people employed, but there are a lot of activities and services provided in our Title IV grant. But, yeah, there are over 100 employees.
And I mean, in theory, we're not going to lose the funding for all 100, but can we absorb? Because I would hate to think of anyone losing their jobs.
Well, that is, that is the, I mean, we did this exercise a couple of months ago. Sheri has been looking at how many, because we've been doing internal conversations around what do we do and how do we place, absorbing the positions. So there's, there's different options that districts can do. If we have to absorb positions, the idea would be that we would have those positions, but if funds are being reduced and they are, and a lot of the funding is used to manage a specific office, and now the office is going away. There was notification that I got about the Title III multilingual learners. That was, in one report was saying it was completely going to go away. We are waiting from guidance from MSD on all of these. So even if we get federal information, our guidance from our state superintendent to the superintendents has been wait until we, at the state level, are able to give you more details on how to handle some of these communications that are coming up from the federal level. So we're not doing any sudden moves. We're going to wait to see what the state says to us in terms of guidance of what to do. But if funding gets cut quite a bit, we'll have to do proportional cuts, and we'll have to also think about individuals moving into other maybe vacant positions that the district has. So I don't want to cause any panic because I think there is perhaps an interest to cause panic, and I don't want that to be the case for our staff. We will come to you, the board, in enough time, once we've figured out what our options are, if we have to take any action.
Appreciate that. Ms. Smith, here's something, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another question. Dr. Navarro, you mentioned professional development needing to change in terms of the number of contracted services that were previously provided and needing to bring that more in-house, and the fact that you've already kind of built capacity to do that. I'm curious if the budget is going to increase or remain the same if we're going to require teachers to lead some of these kind of cross-county trainings. Is that the capacity that you spoke of, or is it more so at central office?
So a mixture of both because central office is lean and mean, and so we actually train people that are working in our schools to be the people that do the training. So for example, for a lot of our math training that we do in the system, it is sometimes our amazing math folks upstairs, but they have a cadre of teachers that are in different schools who are also leading that professional learning. And Kevin, I don't know if you want to go into any additional details.
This summer, we're doing an emphasis on rolling out Danielson again with the new Danielson framework. And so we'll be training folks from every school to help roll that out within their buildings. And so we are, like Dr. Navarro said, we'll be relying more on train the trainers because we don't have enough people, potential to be able to train everybody, but we'll be working with the schools and making sure that we have enough people to be able to train our folks. And we'll be able to continue with professional learning because it's still of high priority within the school system.
No, absolutely. Thank you.
Will you finish, Ms. Smith? Well, I had a question about the fiscal year 2025 items that were not fully funded. Can you explain about that? And are we potentially looking at the same thing in 2026?
No.
Okay.
So in 2025, you know, we didn't get fully funded.
Right.
And there was nothing on that list that Dr. Navarro felt could be cut. So what we did is we went through the budget and we said, okay, assuming that we've got better years ahead, what can we cut out of this year's budget to fund the things that we need and hope that we, you know, get them the next year? That's a lesson that we're not going to repeat because it doesn't necessarily mean better times are ahead.
That's true.
So those cuts that we made last year were one-time cuts, but we needed them back in the budget. They couldn't be out indefinitely. But that also speaks to the point of, you know, we have budgeted salaries at 98%, which assumes a 2% vacancy rate. There's been some talk and some discussion among the commissioners, why don't we do 97?
I remember, yes.
But that's one of those items that's a slow slope. Because this year, we did not see the amount of savings when you take, we do have vacancies, there's no doubt about it. When you take the vacancies and the substitutes and the proximity learning and the international teachers, and you put that all together, we did not have the savings that would make me feel comfortable to do that. So that's what we've tried to do in this budget, is to be prudent about putting in the things that we know we're going to need line items for and not so much of a hope of a better budget next year.
Yeah, we have to...
And a lot of the stuff is actually, the cost of doing business has gone up.
Right.
Yeah.
So when you look at the increases in much of the curriculum, and it's not anything new, it's how do we keep doing what we're doing and afford to do what we do? And we've actually looked to cut back on some of, like Dr. Navarro said, some of the interventions. We offered a variety of different options for schools, and now we're narrowing it. And part of that is actually to help us get a better understanding of exactly how much intervention we're providing students, what's the result of those interventions, and how do we move forward, and making sure that all of our students are reading at grade level. Because the next thing that's coming down, as everyone knows, is this literacy plan from the state where we have to be able to document all of the interventions and supports we're providing for students that are not at grade level.
And basically, just as a reminder, we basically last year forward-funded certain items expecting that our state revenue was going to be higher. If you recall, it was a very low increase on the blueprint funding.
Yeah.
And all of the powers-to-be said, oh, look, it goes up to this. And all of the powers-to-be said, oh, look, it goes up to this. Well, didn't, doesn't look like it went up to that.
Yeah.
It didn't come through as, as we expected.
As expected.
So no more forward funding. We have to live within our means.
Yeah.
Which means we have to make some tough decisions about what we can afford.
I was going to ask, because I know you mentioned that with the state funding, we don't have those numbers yet. It's all projections, we're hoping to have it, I think you said, by next month. Is it too soon to say what potential impacts this may have on the blueprint? And, you know, the things that were being asked of us? Because I know there was a whole big discussion. And candidly, some, some things that were, let's say, deferred? If we will.
Well, I think that the make, do you want to address that, Dr. Navarro?
I will just say that the state, it, it is clear to us what the state portion of the funding is for the blueprint.
Okay.
I think some things were deferred. It gives us a little bit of breathing room, but there's local costs that continue to increase. And as we implement things, we, I think we need to think about what those implications are going to be. So if we continue to expand the, the dual enrollment courses or the early college students, that has a cost that's tied to work in the blueprint, but that has a, a very legitimate cost. And if those, if those increases increase at a certain rate, we may just have some more issues. There's no, there's no question that there is an implication on the local counties to offset a lot of this cost. And that is a real thing that was brought up. And then just one quick note. We talked about the maintenance of effort law in Maryland, which is very, very helpful. But it does not equal inflation on items. And so if the inflation, the cost of doing business, the cost of buying a door to repair a door in a building goes up a certain amount, that is over, above what that maintenance of effort costs are. So when Mr. Lounds talks about contracted services for speech and language pathologists, for examples, or any of those things, those have behavioral health supports. Those have gone, those costs have gone up much, much higher in a year-to-year change than what we anticipated. And those are the things of the cost of doing business. Providing 100 kids with those services used to cost a certain amount. It's a much higher amount to provide the same 100 kids the same services the following year.
Absolutely.
And one follow-up on the maintenance of effort. It sounds, you know, in theory, it sounds good. You get the same amount per child each year, doesn't account for inflation. It also sounds good when you say K through 12, but as we've expanded pre-K.
Have pre-K.
That is not part of the number that we get from the county. So that puts a bigger burden on the system for any of the money above MOE that they give us has to, you know, we have to slide some of it over there to the pre-K. So we're kind of being squeezed all around.
Yeah.
Everybody is.
Right.
But that's why we're, you know, struggling a little bit with making these numbers work.
Because the other thing that's happening is that, you know, the, as the, they're delayed getting the money out from the federal government to the states. We're starting to hear that there's going to be areas that they're not going to be able to fund. And we're not hearing anything concrete. But, and I'll give an example with CTE we're presenting today, but, you know, with the foundations of technology curriculum, the state paid for it. And then we've, we've heard from the vendor who actually provides it that the state isn't going to pay for it this year. Now, we haven't heard that from the state yet, but I'm just saying, you know, there's just a lot of rumors, like Dr. Navarro said, that we have to, we're waiting for concrete.
For concrete information.
Numbers in the state and to hear actually what we're going to be funded for.
But there's concerns when we hear that. So every day, Mr. Lounds is sending me this information. I'm like, oh my God.
It's, it's based on something. And I mean, I'm sure it's not just 100% projection. One second, Ms. Butler Washington. Ms. Obanala, if I'm saying, if you have any questions, you know, just raise your hand and, okay. I don't want you to feel like you can't ask questions. Mr. Navarro will guide you through. Ms. Butler Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Lounds, you mentioned that, that next year we will have to be reporting in on the literacy for third and fourth graders to make sure they're on reading level. And looking at the budget, I see that there's a budget reduction for the Miller and High School staffing. And my question, I think probably would go to you, Dr. Navarro, would that be a decision for the increased size for fourth grade? As we talked about, would that be a decision where you would not, or it would be determined that it should not be beneficial for the fourth graders, the third and, the fourth graders to increase their class ratio so that we won't go into the, the problem of students not being able to read on grade level? When you were put out to, to the state?
So are you, so we actually had staffing, staffing changes starting in fourth and fifth grade and then middle school and high school. And I think what you're asking me also is, do I have concerns about the bubble that may come to be in third grade because of retaining kids that don't yet pass? Right? Because the state has said that if you don't pass, quote unquote, at a certain level, and, and we're still kind of going through the details of, of exactly what it means to pass, that you would be retained as a third grader. Now, there's a way in which families and educators can appeal and everything else, but the idea is that the third grade class would increase potentially. That was, that, we knew that that was happening. So we, we don't know what's going to happen. We could see an increase in the number of third grade cohorts because some kids may be retained. And then that grade goes up and, and becomes a larger fourth grade cohort and fifth grade cohort because some kids are retained. And so we started with fourth grade and fifth grade and didn't touch third grade for that reason, right? Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, because of the, making sure that the students at that grade level have smaller groups for reading interventions.
In case we have retention issues. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Ms. Thomas and then Vice Chair Kramer.
Thank you for the presentation. And I, I just wanted to note two things. One, I really appreciate the fact that we have some anticipatory budgeting. I think that's really important. I know a lot of times people are quite flat-footed as these things. So the four funding we did and the other provisions we've made in order to try to let this be as palatable as possible, if we can use that word, even though we're, we're having a reduction in funding. So I really would like to say to you, Ms. Acton, and you, Ms. Fisher Davis, a, as well as Mr. Lounds, thank you for watching the landscape and trying to help us, you know, come out of this with, with some salvaging of, of the programs. But the one thing I'd like to ask, and this may be to you, Dr. Navarro, is as we look at these programs, I know you're, you're big into data, looking at data. I know we're going to have to make some trade-offs. You know, what do we keep and what do we not keep? And so are we looking at it through the lens of the correlation of what is working well? So that we can continue to fund things that we're doing well if we can try to diversify the way we're funding versus, you know, having to just chop things off because we just don't have enough money? And the reason I ask that question is because it's about continuity, right? We know that students do best when things have continuity. You know, if we stop a program, start a program, stop a program, we oftentimes don't have enough base to see the effectiveness. And so while I know this is probably something you're all on top of, I just want to, you know, kind of hear your thoughts about how we make sure that happens.
So we prioritize the academic interventions that we want to monitor, like you said, over the next several years. And so those were, I think, as Mr. Lounds prioritized, there were some things that were not like, we were going to, you know, cut your pinky, but this is, this has to stay because they are the core interventions in the school system. When we went through tho, that, that process two years ago, we took some things out. So for example, two years ago, I think you heard me, or last year, you heard me talk about no longer having DreamBox because we had now the iReady, MyPath platform. And we were going to follow MyPath continuously because it was going to start in elementary and continue through. So if I'm doing math interventions and support or practice for students, I can continue, teachers can assign MyPath continuously. So we did do that exercise. And then, you know, this financial time sometimes makes, also makes sure that you are streamlining what you're doing, what you're measuring, and why you're going to keep what you're going to keep because you don't have a lot of funding. And I think we did do that exercise. I am always nervous because, you know, I think we did that exercise. I don't want to do any more of it, but I do worry about that. And, and we took back NearPod. That was something that, that a lot of our teachers used.
Not a lot. So, so one of the things Dr. Navarro did do is look at usage.
Oh.
And we look at usage and the amount of usage that was being done by the schools. And then we, we noticed with NearPod, it wasn't a lot of usage going on in the schools. And we were paying a lot of money for every teacher to have access to NearPod. And so that was one of the things we decided not to fund going forward for next year.
But you also heard from the special ed presentation. When Mr. Johnson came in, he talked about the, the application that we're going to use with new teachers to create the goals. And you heard his urgency because there's also a need about more teachers. And so now I think the problem of practice for Mr. Lounds is to look for the funding to expand that because that is a useful tool that teachers definitely want while he narrows the usage in terms of NearPod for, for something that we're not going to continue to have long-term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, related follow-up question. How do you make that determination of something that teachers want or use often? What, what does that process look like?
So as of right now, we have like reading Kim Hudler and Christina Greis, the two folks that work on math and reading for, for the elementary. They look at what interventions are out there. They, they look at what interventions have worked statewide, nationally, and what interventions we're using. And then we are looking at then narrowing those interventions and making sure that our schools are providing those interventions. There's a lot, we found many things out there that schools were using because they found it on, they Googled intervention for math and then they, they were using it. And so what we're trying to do is eliminate all of those to get teachers to end up using the interventions that have been proven to work and focus in on them. And then we have a way, working with Charmaine's office, that if someone does find something, that they found that has worked, they've researched it, it's research-based and it's shown that it's worked, then they can actually bring it to the, to us and then ask for it to be included as one of the interventions.
Okay, so there is still some.
There's still a process.
As I say, it's a process, but I hate to use this word. There's still potentially some disparity of interventions, which I understand to a certain extent maybe can't be helped because, you know, maybe there's a different need at different schools. I'm just trying to think in terms of, you know, equitably trying to ensure that we catch our students up. I don't want it to be a case where one school is using something that, you know, maybe works a little better, has, you know, more data behind it, and then another school is suffering, if that makes sense.
And we don't want it that either.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's my concern. And also, and I'm sure you do, but just ask that you always have the.
So what are they going to be doing, is that this year in synergy?
All of the interventions.
I was going to ask, what does that process look like?
Doing a better job of getting a better understanding of like, for every child, okay, this student's not at grade level, is he getting interventions? And we'll be able to go into synergy and see whether that student's getting the help.
That, that makes me feel better because I do want to have it more, you know, focused. Yeah, well, yeah. And because accountability is, is, is huge. And also to have the teacher input as much as possible. And because they're the ones actually doing the work. You know what I mean? I appreciate the data round if something works, but that doesn't necessarily always mean that it will work for that particular student or the students that they have.
Right.
Yeah. Vice Chair, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both again for all of your hard work. I know this is, must be so much fun, right, to work on. So just appreciate you. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things for the benefit, benefit of the public. I know that your presentation was, was great. I like how you really break things down. We often get questions about like how our dollars are spent, right? And so in our last meeting, we talked about, you know, Ms. Miller's graphic around the blueprint and, you know, what we've been able to do with those funds. So I just wanted to, you know, point out to the public, Slide 38 kind of breaks down how your dollar is spent. So if you, you want to know, that's a, you know, a quick way to see every dollar in education. And about 64 cents of the dollar goes, you know, towards instruction and so on. And then also on Slide 45, just wanted to also point out, this is something we brought up last year, that the percentage of the pie continues to decrease from the county. And so whereas they may be, it's true that they're funding, you know, maintenance of effort, that is true. But that we're down to 40.8% now. Whereas in 2022, we were at 44.6, so almost 45% of the county budget. And now we're just under 41%. And so that downward trend is very concerning. And I just want to point that out, you know, for the public because our enrollment, if you look at Slide 40, is projected to increase next year by 1.35%. And so all of these sort of items coming together to make a perfect storm really is going to, you know, put strain on us as a school system. And so I just kind of wanted to point out a few of those things again for the benefit of the public. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And just a quick follow-up point. When we talk about education funding at the county level, it includes, and we're going to keep saying it, CSM and the libraries. It's not just CCPS. So if I could, you know, for anyone that may have missed that point, education is not just CCPS. But yes, Ms. Thomas.
The only thing I wanted to make as a point is we are talking about some of the software and technology that, that we are purchasing. And, and thank you, Ms. Lounds, for show, for discussing usage. And so if you monitor usage, you'll see who's using it, whether or not we're paying subscriptions and licenses that we don't need. But let's not be afraid to go back and negotiate. As a person who's worked in software sales, go back and negotiate. Let's negotiate and say, we need it, but we don't have enough money. And see if we can get some negotiation economies of scales, combine licenses, ask for partial licenses. Because that definitely is a thing that's happening across the tech and sales industry. And we need to lean in and see if we can get some of those percentage offs, if you will.
Thank you, Madam. Any final questions or comments? Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just one final point. I didn't see it in the budget at all. And I know this is something that was brought up last year that was kind of put on our deferred list, but activity buses for middle school. So just curious, maybe Dr. Navarro, any thoughts around that?
Ms. Acton's face.
I know. But it's something I, you know, I really just want to see happen. And I'm going to continue to advocate for that. And I know.
Wholeheartedly support it.
I know that we're in challenging times, but just if there's any thoughts around, you know.
I thought Mr. Heim is going to personally fund it? No? Not so much.
It's like, uh, no.
No.
I, too, understand the urgency and I have the urgency for it. Looking at the budget this year and what was coming, I just didn't feel like I could put it in with everything else.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I figured. And I just, I just again wanted to just say that it's something that's still on my mind. I think it's on a lot of the board's minds.
Very much so, yes ma'am.
So just that we don't forget. You know, I know that we're doing everything that we can and obviously we have to prioritize things. But definitely would love to see that come back if by some miracle, we're able to make it happen, so.
I appreciate that, Madam Vice Chair. That is hugely important. And of course, so many of our students would take advantage of that. And that would be that many more that could, you know, participate in activity. So I appreciate you raising that. And one final question, just because I just love all things international. You mentioned about the international teachers. What is that looking like? And are there any potential challenges right now? Given, you know, some of the things that are happening nationally with, with bringing international teachers?
So, so I'll respond because we have, we're behind schedule, apologies. And I'll say, we have our international teachers here that we've had, the cohort that we've had last year. We're looking right now on prioritizing, trying to see if we can get a perhaps smaller cohort for, to come in as an additional cohort. So we had additional teachers. So we are trying to expand. And right now, we're just working through the logistics of potential additional costs and see if we can bring a smaller one. When we have that solidified, we can update the board. And Ms. Majors is, is our international teacher expert.
Yeah, slash mama.[1697.51]
Absolutely. First mama, then internet.
Are we thinking math?
That's what I was going to say.
So again, I think the priority is math. Math is starting maybe middle, high school grade levels.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you all.
Well, actually, where are you going, Mr. Lowes? Okay. Next up, we have our CTE presentation. Joining Mr. Lowes will be Ms. Rebecca Brandt, our Director of CTE. Ms. Sandy Rooney, our CTE Content Specialist. Mr. Daryl Jackson, is it senior or junior?
He's a senior.
A senior. Oh, student. Oh, junior. Oh, you're a senior. Okay, got you, at the Virtual Academy program. Okay, I see, because it says junior, senior. So wait. And Ms. Christina Jones, College and Career Specialist. Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Okay, yes, I love that the student is joining us. Welcome. Thank you.
Chairperson Morley, Vice Chairperson Kramer, Board members, Dr. Navarro. We are here today, sitting next to the powerful CTE team.
They are rock stars, there's no doubt.
Last year, last June, we came in front of you and we presented a CTE plan going forward. You had some great advice, and one of the things that you wanted before we implemented anything really was to go out and get some feedback from our communities, from our parents, and from our students. And I'll say, these guys did a fantastic job of doing and meeting with, you know, all three stakeholders in going forward. And so they've made some adjustments to the plan that we're going to bring to you today, based on the feedback that they've received. But there's also been adjustments at MSDE in at what college and career readiness and what CTE is going forward. So they've also made some adjustments based on the new definitions that are coming down. So this afternoon, we're here to provide you an update on CTE and what we plan on going forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brandt, and she will start the presentation.
And one second, Ms. Brandt. I neglected to mention, this also includes the junior achievement update, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I've got a few other updates sprinkled in.
And the other thing that includes is, there is a curriculum update. We're just going to go right into after questions, just because there was an adjustment from MSDE with our nursing program.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brandt.
So good afternoon, Chairperson Morley, Vice Chairperson Kramer, the board members, and Dr. Navarro. I'm Rebecca Brandt, Director of Career and Technical Education. I'm excited to provide some updates regarding the CTE pathways in Charles County Public Schools. All of these updates are kind of interwoven in, so we're going to, we'll get through them as I get to the different aspects. All right, so starting out, we wanted to let you know that there are additional endorsements for our graduates in these coming years, starting this year, is the ability for students to earn several of these. These include college and career readiness, career and technical education, or the Maryland Certificate of Program Completion. Students can earn the CCR endorsement through the interim criteria or the current criteria set. The CTE endorsement can be earned if a student has their approved three to five course sequence this year. Next year, it would be that they complete two courses within the CTE pathway and then earn an industry-recognized credential. And that'll make a little more sense as I go into some of the changes that are coming with our CTE pathways. And then finally, Larry Johnson referenced the Maryland Certificate of Program Completion in his presentation last week. So that's something that will be available for those students. So these endorsements will be on students' transcripts starting this school year. All right, so now we're going to dive into CTE. All right, so you can see on this slide, the data provided is for school year 24, '25. Just as last year, when I came to speak to you, we're about a year behind with data. My data usually comes out end of June, so it's not quite here yet for this school year. So we'll talk about in this regard. We had 2,181 graduates last spring. Of those students, 34% completed a CTE pathway. From the students who completed a CTE pathway, 42% attained an industry-recognized credential. In school year 22, '23, students were not required to take industry-certified, their certification exams, because at that point, they were still reimbursed. So the students paid. If they got a passing score, then we reimburse them. So last school year was the first year that they were required within our CTE pathways, and we paid. And so what we're seeing from that is, one, higher number of students that are taking them. Two, we're also seeing a transition, where this is something that can really be used within the classroom. It can be a grade, it can be, students can be held accountable to that level of expertise. So we're going to see continued development, I think, through curriculum development and as our teachers become much more apparent that this is a stepping stone and a requirement within the courses. All right, and then I'm going to go, so you can see, yep, okay. All right, and so on this slide, you're able to see the vast number of different certification exams that are available in a lot of diverse areas. These numbers do continue to grow from year to year. So the focus of our department is to continually strengthen and develop pathways for our students that will support them once they graduate. So for the most part, students who choose to be in a, students choose to be in a CTE pathway in an eighth or 10th grade. And we know that that is, that's tough. You know, they're making this, their decision, they're determining who they are, and then lots of changes happen, especially through those high school years. So at this time, I would like to introduce Sandy Rooney, the CTE Content Specialist and Apprenticeship Maryland Coordinator for Charles County Public Schools, to talk about the amazing opportunities she develops through the Apprenticeship Maryland program.
Thank you. So the Apprenticeship Maryland program requires students to work a minimum of 450 hours with an employer that is approved through the Department of Labor. The student is a W-2 employee, they're paid at least minimum wage, they have to complete a related instruction course while also earning an industry-recognized credential. Last school year, in '23, '24, we had six students completing the Apprenticeship Maryland program, and we've significantly increased that number to 29 this year. So it's important to note that while we have many students who are interested in apprenticeships, that we are limited in placements, because we need more community partners who are interested in hiring our high school students as a senior, as a youth apprentice. So I want to introduce Mr. Jackson here. So we are joined, he is one of our 29 apprentices that successfully met all the requirements of the Apprenticeship Maryland program, earning them a certificate and graduation honor cord from the Maryland Department of Labor. Daryl Jackson, Jr. is a high school senior graduating next week from Thomas Stone High School. He has far exceeded the minimum required hours of 450, working almost 800 for the Charles County Public Schools Office of Technology as a computer analyst apprentice at Benjamin Stoddard Middle School, gaining invaluable hands-on experience. His mentor at Benjamin Stoddard, computer analyst John McWilliams, said he has been an absolute marvel to work with and is beyond thankful to have had him on his team this year. In March, Daryl was honored with the Benjamin Stoddard Golden Stallion Award by his colleagues. Eighth-grade science teacher Ms. Hicks presented the staff award citing his kind spirit, diligent work ethic, and always being readily available to help with a smile, and shared how he troubleshoots any issues they come across and ensures all of their technical issues are handled in a timely manner. I'm also excited to share that Daryl recently earned the CompTIA A-plus certification earlier this month and has no plans to stop there. We are excited that the Charles County Public School Technology Department will not be losing him. Instead, he will be transitioning from an apprentice to one of their dedicated members of the technology team while he attends Western Governor's University pursuing a Bachelor's in Computer Science.
All right, congratulations.
So this is just a fantastic example of just unique experiences that we're able to offer. So not only was he able to be a phenomenal staff member, but he's able to get a credential certification while he was, while he was working. I think that you've found a niche that you're enjoying, obvious by your decisions after you leave our doors. So it's really exciting. It's exactly what we're kind of looking for you, to be able to explore and find your niche and get your step forward and be able to leave here with a path. So thank you for joining us today.
Daryl, do you have anything to say?
I have to say, please, share.
Well, first and foremost, I definitely want to thank my Lord, my Creator, the Lord Jesus Christ. He has placed me in His church, I'm a lively stone. I am so thankful for all the people that He has placed in my life, my parents. They have played His role in my development, my trajectory. And, you know, I also want to thank all my teachers. I definitely want to thank the apprenticeship program. It has been an amazing experience, and I've gained so much hands-on experience. I've learned a lot from my mentors, just being able to shadow Him. And, you know, definitely earning that certification was a huge accomplishment. So I also want to thank the CCPS Technology Department, because as Ms. Rooney has said, I understand how, for a lot of employers, it can be seen to be a risk to take on a high school student. And for them to give me the opportunity to, you know, them giving me a chance and just give me a shot to be their apprentice and be an apprentice under the Technology Department, I know is a huge benefit, and I'm very grateful for it. I've learned so much, as I said. You know, last but not least, I want to thank you guys for the recognition. This is just like a cherry on top. I'm a little nervous, but at the end of the day, this is definitely an encouragement, something I can reflect on in the future to just help me to continue aiming high, setting new goals and striving to achieve them. So thank you.
Absolutely. Can you tell us a little bit about what you did, like, what day-to-day looked like for you?
Yeah, so as I said, being an apprentice, I was afforded the opportunity to shadow an experienced professional, Mr. McWilliams. So as I learned more, I was able to take on more. So essentially, our job is to handle any technology-related issues, whether that is a hardware issue, a software issue, whether it's dealing with a teacher, a student, any other staff member. We want to ensure that we troubleshoot their problem and get it resolved. We want to make sure everyone is able to use a technology for their position. So a big part of it is taking on-demand tasks. So I take phone calls, I take emails, they come a lot less than the phone calls. But we also have a ticketing system that we use to manage all the problems that we do solve. And, you know, I know I've done a lot of tickets from the start of the apprenticeship up until now. I've done over 1,100 tickets.
Wow.
I'd say another huge part of my job and, you know, just say generally a CA's job is imaging and inventory. I know from the start of the apprenticeship, I have imaged in inventory nearly 1,000 laptops. You know, that definitely does speak to how essential that is to our job. And, you know, earning that certification, I was able to learn so many different, you know, sections in technology. The CompTIA A-plus is like a broad overview of a lot of stuff. So cloud computing, virtualization, hardware and software, security procedures, operational procedures, just a vast array of different topics. So I was able to learn a lot of that and apply it to the job, the apprenticeship. So troubleshooting, hardware, that was a slow progression, and I got a lot better in it. And software, just having an apprenticeship opportunity, I was able to see a lot of hardware and softwares that I would have never seen just reading a textbook or just, you know, taking an online course, because a lot of times, the workforce is a lot different from just theoretical knowledge you get from the textbook. So like I said, this apprenticeship has given me a lot of insight, and I'm very thankful for it. And that's just, that's just a little bit. I can't think of it all.
That was wonderful. That's very helpful, especially for students that may be on the fence about doing it or parents that have questions. It's wonderful to hear directly from someone who enjoyed it so much and learned a lot. Thank you. Did you, yes, yes, please.
All right, so back to our transitions and updates. So we collected feedback after we presented. Last June, we sent out the opportunity for both parents, students, staff members to all provide feedback to us. Additional feedback was collected from industry representatives and program advisory committees just for logistical aspects, just student attainment and impacts that the changes would have and what was best for our community and our students. And so that's led us to kind of pivot and shift. But another major thing is some changes that are proposed by Maryland State Department of Education for CTE, and this is overarching. So currently, our CTE programs are three to five courses. Then within those courses, students have the opportunity to earn college credits, industry-recognized credentials, sometimes both. And of course, the opportunities for internships and apprenticeships and things like that are built in as well. I think as things were progressing under Blueprint and things were also growing in dual enrollment, and of course, more pushes for work-based learning and apprenticeships, after hearing this, we see why. They really wanted to provide a way for the flexibility. So they're proposing that the CTE pathways will be two required courses. And then the last courses, which could be one, two, three, will be, what they're saying is flex. These flex courses offer versatility in the model to be dual enrollment, work-based learning, apprenticeship. It could be continued education and a capstone project. So that's something that we are currently digesting and seeing exactly how that impacted each individual pathway. But that also impacts as we're making transitions within our pathways to make sure that we're going to be able to present these in this way for our students. So they currently, they got industry feedback on all of these pathways through this spring. We just received all of these a few weeks ago, two weeks, last week, I don't know. And we pushed them out to our educators. They have a very small window to provide their feedback through the lens of an educator, which is direly important, because right now, we have where the industry wants. And we need to know, is this capable of being attained by our students? Is this, like, is the rigor able to be done, and is this accessible for our students? So we're really looking for that instructor feedback. So that's due to us by Friday. And then we're going to turn and provide that to Maryland State Department of Education. And they present these pathways in June to the Maryland Board. Implementation is projected for 2027, '28. They did give us a little window to pivot, which is nice, because sometimes that isn't the case. So that part is, it's there. It's not as big as we would like, but. Okay, so now I'm going to go ahead and go back through some of the suggested changes that we provided last June and let you know where we are currently. So interactive media production timeline. The goal is to create a learning hub for all the programs within the career cluster to include theater, dance, interactive media, and graphic communications. So graphic communications was going to move to McDonough High School to be part of that hub. After gathering some more feedback and looking at the logistics, there just was not the building capacity for that move. So that is going to stay at North Point. Interactive media production is currently at Robert D. Steadam Educational Center. That will be transitioning from a two-year program to a four-year program. An eighth grade is applied to that program this fall. And so we have a whole cohort of students who are ready to join McDonough next fall. Next, Case Natural Resources. This pathway is currently at McDonough High School. The goal is to increase the student experiences and connection to workforce. So we are transitioning that program to a two-year program at Robert D. Steadam Educational Center. This was changed and pushed back one year. So students that are currently enrolled at the program and signed onto the program at McDonough will finish their cohort at McDonough. So they're going to stay put, they're going to finish what they signed up for, and then we're going to be transitioning, which is one of the main feedbacks, understandably so. So, and the other thing is that this pathway is now under the proposed, going to be called agricultural science. So that's something where it will probably transition into. We are starting to work on the renovation of the existing greenhouse at Steadam. That work will start this summer and will get finished throughout the next school year. So we don't have exactly the timeline, but they're going to start, work on that this summer. And then we are also, within the next, the new program is incorporating drone education into the agricultural field. So that's something we're going to be looking at adding to that pathway as well. All right, Project Lead the Way Biomedical Science. This program, we were going to regionalize just the final courses, the concentration courses and completer courses. Again, based on feedback from the community and untruthfully, when we looked at the value added with that transportation, it was not going to result in the outcomes that we desired. So this is now going to be an application-based program available at two sites. So it will be application, starting in the fall, for our eighth graders. They can choose to join this pathway. It will be at La Plata or Westlake, and students will go to either of those locations based on where they're currently zoned to. So where it will be most close for their proximity.
So I don't know if you remember, but when they were going to start their ninth and 10th grade in their home high school, then go to one of the regional sites, their 11th and 12th grade year. And one of the biggest voices was the student voice, saying they did not want to leave their high school after two years, that they'd much rather start in a high school and finish in a high school.
High school communities are extremely important.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so we really wanted to hear that and do what we could. But this change will allow for additional dual enrollment. And also, we're hoping that this will allow us to solidify our internship opportunities during that capstone courses, because we can really funnel them to these specific locations. All right, so Project Lead the Way Engineering is, has a similar change that we just stated for biomed. So this will be that they are applying in eighth grade. Um, instead of just those final courses and changing, they're going to apply in eighth grade and they would join this pathway fully. Uh, so this will be offered at Thomas Stone and Lackey. And again, students would attend based on where they're currently zoned. Uh, this program will also add additional certifications in either SolidWorks, Inventor, AutoCAD, and/or Revit. So we're looking for two. We're working with our, um, industry representatives to see what would be the most beneficial. And truthfully, everybody has different opinions. So we're getting there, though. We're getting there. All right, and then I wanted to take a moment before going to the next two transitions and talk about dual in school, just to refresh when we say dual in school. We have a lot of different slogans and way we, we talk about things. Dual in school is a way that our students earn college credits while in our high schools. Um, so they take the courses within our schools, but we have agreements in place to allow those to end up in transcripted credits. So they go through the approval process. Many times, it is our curriculum, their curriculum, sitting next, uh, next to each other to make sure that they get the appropriate outcomes. Sometimes it is a final assessment that students may take, sometimes it's specific grades, sometimes it's a portfolio or projects that are turned into the college and assessed. Uh, so based on the different, um, course, they, those aspects vary. And you can see, we have a lot of examples of this already in existence within our schools. So we really wanted to play on that and, and make it even larger. And the first place that we're really seeing something, I'm going to give a, an update and then go into how we're going to be using dual in school. Um, so Cisco IT Networking and Cyber Security, we are continually looking for ways to increase student outcomes to include additional industry-recognized credentials and college credits. So currently, this year, one support that we did was they provided an additional certification opportunity for both juniors and seniors, and that was the Cisco Certified Support Technician. And so that's like an entry-level certification exam that is really beneficial and able to be built, built off of to achieve the more rigorous CCNA. And so we had a lot of success. You can see on that slide, the different, um, number of students were able to successfully attain this. So then, if seniors, uh, were successful at attaining this credential this year, the seniors then did take the CCNA. And so there was a pocket of students that did take the CCNA, and we had one student this year that attained it. Um, so what we're, we're expecting is because the juniors and seniors, we were all, remember, we went, and I talked about this last June, but you all hear a lot of information. We were, we're rebuilding, um, the program. And so the, the instructors are working rigorously, like so hard and doing fantastic things in that, in that program. So they really are rebuilding and, and getting things amped up. So I really, they expect the juniors next year, as they continue and have another year on top, to really see even more success on that CCNA. But I do want to let the community know that the CCNA for high school students is a very difficult exam. Um, it's really, really tough. It's tough for many adults. So where that is, is a goal and we will continue to push the rigor of that. Um, it, it just needs to be taken into account that it is a difficult exam for our students. So as we continue to look at, at the outcomes for this program and what will be most feasible for our students, we are looking at a dual in school program. So a way for our students to earn not only a, a dual enrollment credit for the CTE-specific course, but also get those high school graduation requirement courses while in our school. So we are working to partner with an institute of higher ed, um, to, to get that happening. So more information to come in the coming weeks. We are hoping to have it solidified to be able to advertise next fall. All right, and on the same regard, for the STEM certificate, this is going to be a similar model of a dual in school opportunity for students who are interested in a STEM pathway specifically engineering. Um, so this is going to target students that are advanced in math. Um, and so we are going to try to offer, um, science and math sequence to support those interested in STEM fields after graduation with the goal of completing one year of an AA or a certificate within our walls. And again, hitting those graduation requirements as a dual in school model.
So one of the things with the STEM certificate and talking to colleges, it said, uh, you should really focus more on the STEM certificate than specifically engineering, because it, it allows your students actually more flexibility once they leave the, the high school. And it gives them the, the science credits and the math credits that they need to pursue an engineering degree or to pursue another field, a STEM field within the college pathways.
Okay, so to continue to try to grow our teacher pipeline, we have another exciting opportunity. Um, so for the Teacher Academy of Maryland students, we have the opportunity for Associate of Arts in Teaching, the AAT. And Saint Mary's is piloting this year, so we're going to get to see them go through this with a cohort of students before we begin. Uh, but the goal is for our students who, well, our Teacher Academy of Maryland students will finish their CTE pathway during their 11th grade year, which includes having an internship within our school system. Um, and then their senior year, they'll complete one year of the AAT while in Charles County Public Schools. And so they'll still have one, one year of the AA after they leave. Um, but again, it gets in that full start and it also, they, they've made sure to include, um, some courses to keep them hooked into the field of education. I think at first, when they were developing this, it was mostly all their general education courses. And it was like, no, 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 we need to keep it so that they have the content as well. So you can see that each semester within there, they have a course that's tied specifically to the field of education to keep them rolling. And so we will, we'll have a cohort in the twenty-six, twenty-seven. Yeah, it's, it is really.
So, sorry, to clarify, they'll grad, they won't graduate high school with the AAT. They'll have one year.
One year of it completed, correct.
So we are working on that. So just to let you know, this is the program that, that they have going on with Saint Mary's. We are going to try to make a program with a little Charles County flair to it, which will allow them to graduate with an AA degree.
That's, that's what I'm.
But we're working on it.
That would be great, yeah.
And I think Saint Mary's already spoke about not having them necessarily finishing the Teacher Academy of Maryland pathway prior. And I think if they did not have that as a prerequisite, like even if they just took the two introductory courses and then entered in, in their 11th grade year, that might be an opportunity for us to, to push through. So, we're working on it. Aviation, okay, so we have a new pathway coming. This is going to be new. Um, I know we've talked about this a few times and we've really made some great, um, headway with this. Uh, so the goal is to meet our workforce needs and our student interests. Uh, so you can see that it manned and unmanned will be offered. It'll be a regionalized program at Henry E. Lackey and students will apply in eighth grade. Um, so they'll apply in the fall of twenty-twenty-six. And so right now, we have already figured out curriculum. We're working with, um, FAA. We've met with Maryland Airport and College of Southern Maryland as a lead, as a partner. And economic development is also, um, involved in this initiative as well. So in the same umbrella, College of Southern Maryland is working on their aviation maintenance pathway. And so they are currently trying to secure their grant funding. They're hoping to hear back, I think, they said September. Um, and so they are in that part. They've gotten their curriculum approved. Um, and so they're going through all of the, the different steps to have aviation maintenance. Um, so if that is approved, then we could partner with that and offer an early college opportunity as a senior for students to get the, the general studies aspect of aviation maintenance while they're a CCPS student. So this is a summary, because I just threw a ton of information at you. So this kind of gives you year by year when things are going to be rolling out, so you can reference that. Okay, additional updates, financial literacy. All right, I want to thank several of the board members who have brought the importance of personal finance, financial literacy to the forefront. Uh, it is so very important for the success of our students and I see it working hand in hand as we grow our career exploration within our school system. They just are very, very great partnership. Um, so we did have the privilege of, to visit Junior Achievement in both Montgomery County and Prince George's County this past year. So for those of you who do not know, Junior Achievement Finance Park is an interactive, hands-on experience where students take on adult financial roles and make decisions about real-life budgeting and spending. This organization would be a fantastic resource and experience for our students. The first, uh, there are two main barriers for which we, we would need solutions, though. The first is students must complete fourteen forty-five-minute lessons prior to visiting the finance park. So identifying when those lessons would occur would be a challenge based on the current educational requirements. Uh, so currently, I think most do it middle school students, right? Yes. So just figuring out, okay, so when would that occur? What something has to give, right? So right now, we're already playing, I think, Tetris with a lot of our, um, requirements within those years. So this is something important, but again, it's figuring out something has to give if we're going to be doing that aspect. And the second barrier is cost, cost slash logistics. Um, so you can see on the slide, uh, all eighteen parks that are in existence receive their funding startups in different ways. So it's partnerships between foundations, government, uh, colleges, and local school systems. So for instance, Prince George's County, their local school system provided the land. Capital One funded a large sum. And then Prince George's County Government received grant funding. And then Junior Achievement still has a cost per student that we would need to take into consideration. So it's twenty-five to thirty-five dollars per student that attends. And so it, I mean, this would, something for the tri-county region, I see would be very beneficial, a partnership between the tri-counties. But again, you can see that there's just some barriers there. So in the meantime, um, the career team came up with a solution that was absolutely wonderful for this school year. Uh, similar to Junior Achievement, Reality Fair provides students the opportunity, um, to make financial decisions that affect their monthly budgets. So we partnered with Cedar Point Federal Credit Union and Edu, Educational Systems Federal Credit Union to bring a pop-up version to College of Southern Maryland. So one hundred and fifty seventh and eighth graders participated and it was truly an eye-opening experience for them to see the cost of everything. It was really.
Oh, yeah.
I, 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 it was, it was a happy day. Um, so you can see, this is a fantastic experience for these students. Um, we would love to grow this. Uh, we would love to expand this and provide a deeper experience for our high school students as well. So you could really see it being layered throughout as they, they grow too. Um, the cost of the experience is community volunteers and partnerships. So really, the, the monetary is low. It's mostly, we need people, we need the logistics and the places to do it. And so it's something that we really could do, um, with the community partnerships and volunteers to support it. So that's a low-hanging fruit, as far as, um, some, some growth within our financial literacy aspects. All right, so at this point, uh, it's my pleasure to introduce Christina Jones, Career Specialist for Charles County Public Schools. She's been tasked with overseeing and supporting the implementation of career exploration in the middle schools and growing the fantastic supports already available in our high schools. So she is just very dynamic and dedicated and passionate, um, and she's done fantastic work. I have a really, really great team.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon. Um, at first, when Ms. Brandt said, oh, you need to present to the board, I was like, what? I got instantly nervous. But our career team is doing, doing amazing work. And so it's easy to come here and share with you all of the great things that they're doing. So we've made great strides. This is our second year of the Blueprint implementation. Um, while we already had our career, college and career advisors in the high school, there were a lot of components in the blueprint that we needed to cover and add. And they have done such a wonderful job. I don't know if you've been in the high schools recently, but they are ready for senior awards night. They are gearing up for graduation. They have talked to every senior repeatedly about what is your plan, what are you doing, what, you know, how did you get there? And we did have a few students who, oh my goodness, you don't have a plan, let's sit down, let's talk, let's make sure. Um, a new program this year was the Maryland Service Year Opportunity. Charles County had over eighty applicants alone for this program. Um, it was just this amazing work by our career team, getting the word out, talking to students, seeing if that would be a good fit for them. Um, but at our program, diving in to what your interests are, what your skills are as a student, and then seeing how they relate to different careers and, and showing students, this is the path we need to take. That is the basis of our work. And one way we lay that foundation is using Zello, our online career exploration platform. It is, um, tremendous. When we talk about having subscriptions that we're not using, um, this, Zello is not one of them. There are so many things within Zello we could be utilizing. And each year, each month, we are really trying to make sure we are utilizing every bit of Zello, including having it linked to our common apps for our college seniors. So with Zello, they do career assessments. So they, students answer questions. You know, do they like to work outside? Do they want to be at a desk all day? Do they want to be somewhere in the middle? And they have about forty questions that they answer, and Zello kicks back career matches. And then students are able to read about each career. What is the salary? What is the education and training? What is the day-to-day of that job? And that gives our career team some very foundational information, some data. Because then from that data, we're able to say, hey, I have an opportunity here. If you are interested in culinary, we're taking a field trip to a local restaurant where they're going to show us, one, how they prep food, how they make the food, the different, the behind-the-scenes work that maybe we don't always see. So we're able to individualize those experiences for kid. And I wrote a lot of notes, because our team is doing so many amazing things. But I promise, I only chose the top four today. And I know as they're watching, they're going to be like, she didn't know.
That's a good problem to have.
Right, exactly. And that's why I say this is easy to come up here and share this information with you. Um, but for example, one of our middle schools has created a YouTube channel, um, the Bulldog Network, where kids who are interested in digital media, journalism, um, public speaking, they have created this channel and they go around the county and interview different people. So it could be industry people, our CTE instructors. They have hit just about every program. So it's doing a twofold. It's allowing kids to, from a kid's perspective, what are these CTE pathways, what are they about? But it also, those kids who were interested in that specific career field are now starting to get experience. And some of them are saying, mm, I'm not sure this is for me. And sometimes that's just as good, is seeing what we don't like, right? So we don't want it. Um, another one, and rising yours back there, doula. We had a doula come in to speak. And we, even I was like, wait a second, what is a doula? Like, I know they're a medical field, but what is the education and experience? So I had to do some research, and I think that's the core of this program, is making sure that our students know all the different types of career fields that are out there, more than just what mom and dad or Uncle Bob do, okay? And the fact that we did have to Google just to see what all of the requirements are for doula. This is the type of things that our kids are getting exposed to based off of that information. So Summer started it and she looked. If they said in Zello they were interested in any kind of medical field, she invited them out to that lunch and learn. It was, it was just a great opportunity. Um, and then for our high school kids, some of our kids who know they want to work with their hands, they're not going to college, they want to do something. There was a union field trip, the Carpentry Union invited a bunch of different unions to their place. And kids were able to go up and talk to a bunch of different unions, plumbers, steam fitters, carpentry, there were several there. And then Sandy's been working with Local Seventy-Seven to maybe we do something in September, right here in Aggie, something very similar. So just exposing our kids to those types of things based off of that Zello information. And so that's how we're building upon this. So from all of those experiences, those individualized experiences, um, we have decided that every student in grade six through twelve needs to create a career plan. And that career plan is going to evolve. We want it to evolve, based on how their interests change or their values change or what they decide is important for them. Um, and it'll be, what do you want to do? What is the pathway? And then at least three actionable tasks that says, okay, I should be. And then, at least three actionable tasks that says, "Okay, I should be working on this. If I want to go into the electrical union, I should be looking at Sandy's amp. I should be talking to my career advisor. Are we going to have the union, IBEW25, come in and speak to us soon?" So, it's those types of actionable tasks. Our goal is, as kids walk across the stage, not only is their career plan, they've achieved, they know that goal, but all those actionable steps are completed for them to take the next step. And so, if we go to the next slide, so last year, we did implement Zello. We chose core lessons that build upon each other for grade levels. They go over things such as interests, discovering pathways, career demands, you know, what careers are in demand based on what you're looking at. And then, we do Matchmaker, and Matchmaker's that fun activity where I get to answer those questions and you match me to different fields. Now, depending on students, we know how some are like, "Click, click, 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 click." And then, they're getting, you know, a karate teacher, and they're like, "What? What is that?" You can reset it, and now, we really know how we should be answering those, how we should guide. I encourage, we encourage all of our students, if you feel like it's time to reset, do it. Like, let's see how the answers change. And I love it when the answers don't change, and they're like, "Wow, okay, well, maybe this might be for me. Let me look more into it." And as you can see, this year, we've really solidified, and now, we're starting to build on that. Our Zello Core completion this year was excellent. Eighty-one percent of our secondary students have completed it. Eighty-nine percent of our eighth and ninth graders have completed the Matchmaker. The career plan that we just started here in the spring, nineteen percent have completed. And the goal for that next year is we will revisit those career plans every year, and we're going to do it in the fall. That way, when they go to course selection, they can take it with them. And they can say, "Well, look, this is what my Zello is saying, this is what my plans were. We could look at CCPS courses, we could look at CTE pathways. What aligns with what my career choices and what Charles County Public Schools has to offer?" That is the goal, and we're almost there. And then, this year, we did start looking at how many kids are doing these individualized career exploration activities. Sixty-nine percent of our secondary students had at least one individualized experience, which I think just speaks volumes to what my team is doing, and they just come up with amazing ideas, so it's easy to do this work. And that is it. Those are the seeds we're planting.
Fantastic. Thank you all so much.
We'll take questions. We do have after this...
Some additional slides for you to look at later on some of the updates on Zello and what it does and how to activate it.
Yeah, we added... Okay, and before we take questions, we do have two in-person speakers for public forum.
Okay.
So, if you don't mind, after this, Mr. Lyles will ask you to come back because you're pretty much the rest of our program.
All right. So, I'll start on this end and work... Yes.
I was so excited about this presentation because, as you know, this is my jam. I've been an HR professional for twenty-plus years. I fell backwards into IT, but I've also explored a plethora of careers, just having done classification and hiring and recruiting for all kinds of jobs. Like, I hired before an agency that they did research on sperm from whales. I mean, like, I have hired all kinds of crazy jobs. So, first, I'd like to start off by saying, I had tons of notes, Mr. Jackson, I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of you, let me tell you. As a fellow CompTIA A-plus certified person who, that was not what I started with, like, I did HR, and that test is not hard, but you learn a lot about hardware, software, networking, software implementation, being an administrator of software systems. I mean, you learn a lot, and you went through that, and I was like, eleven hundred images, okay, he's got it, right? So, I don't know if my entire board understood what you were saying, but I understand, you're managing your remedy tickets or whatever your ticketing system is, you know, what your close rate is, like, I got it. And so, you have a lot of what, you know, I work for Oracle, so you have a lot of what my entry-level college folks have. And so, I'm so proud of you for that, and I'm so proud of you for leaning in and keep going. It is amazing, and I'm very proud of you for that. The other thing I wanted to say is I'm very appreciative of all the work that all of the presenters are doing in this area. Ms. Brent and I met two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, feels like forever. We met two weeks ago, and she shared with me all the information that's coming from the Maryland State on what we're doing to make the changes, and I'm reviewing, too, so I owe you my feedback on Friday. But it is awesome to see that we are actually leaning into making the changes, and not just the changes that are right now, because, you know, I'm just going to say it, we're all old up here, like, we're old in comparison, right? And the things that we know that are working from how we're... I'm going to speak for all of us, right?
First of all...
Speak for yourself, right?
But the things that we know about what is now in a career is not going to be the same when the students that we send off, and so, making sure that they're meeting the emerging needs, you know, is very important. Making sure that we have industry-reap representatives that are not telling us what they did in, as my chairperson would say, in the nineteen hundreds, but what they're going to need soon. So, I really do appreciate that. I wanted to raise a couple of points. One, when we look at aviation, air traffic control, in the state of Maryland, we have one of the biggest air traffic controller training programs. I would love to see us add that to aviation. I know it could be, you know, a couple of years out, but aviation, air traffic controller takes two years of not even touching anything, just learning, and then it takes two more years of being in the FAA doing work before you can even touch anything. But if we could start our students with that, as we know in the media, we need air traffic controllers. So, that was something we should be thinking about adding to aviation. For the sake of the public, I think it's also important to mention, and if I say this incorrectly, please correct me, but just because you're not in a program doesn't mean you can't take classes in a program. So, I don't want parents to say, "Oh, my kid didn't get in this program." You can still go take some classes and some other programs if there's space available and that kind of stuff, if a student may want to add that. So, I think that's, we don't want any parents to say, "Oh, oh, my goodness, we can't." For the teacher program, I would like us, I know we have some partnerships locally in our area, but I was looking at Boise State University, they have a program about male educators. Perhaps we could think about that. I know Dr. Navarro would like to see us increase our male educators, so I think that may be a program just to look into, you know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And then, I was also glad to see that we, from the Cisco perspective, are starting kids off at a lower level, right? You need more help desk technicians, people who are answering tickets, doing networking, that kind of thing, and it's a layered trajectory. So, we start kids off as CCNA, that's a hard task. I mean, I know, you know, very, very seasoned people who do not pass that test on their first go. It's like, third time they pass it. I know some people that just gave up, like, "I do the work every day, but I can't pass the test." And so, for the sake of the public, like, if a kid does not pass that test, you have to understand how incredibly difficult that test is to take, and I'm glad that we added, you know, a layer before that to prepare the students for a test. So, it was really, and I met with Ms. Revel, the teacher at North Point, and we had some robust conversations about where we find internships. So, this is my plug. There's lots of the big firms out there to do tech consulting. Come into Charles County Public Schools, we will give you interns. We have them. We have seasoned people like Mr. Jackson who will come work for you, but I also want to make sure that we're thinking about how we... They're going to be seasoned when they leave Charles County Public Schools.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that we have ways, because it is difficult when you're talking about tech insecurity and that kind of thing, being on somebody's network to get a sixteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old. But if we, you know, can do that, we can, and there are some intel communities out there that start at sixteen, giving clearances so you can get into the networks. I want us to think about that. And my colleagues are probably like, "If she doesn't stop it..." But one more thing, the other thing that I would like to see is us do a little bit of STEAM. You know, STEM is great, right? But we have some kids that can, maybe there's some art certifications out there that kids can get, whether it's drawing, or dance, or music. If we can add some STEAM to the STEM, put that A in there, I know we're doing some of it at McDonough, but I'd love to see us... I had a daughter who's a singer, and if there's things out there that we can do for music or singing, there's also opportunities for that as well, and consulting. I talked to Ms. Brandt about this. People are like, "What? What is a consultant, right?" Most kids would be like, "What is a consultant?" But consultants can do all types of things, and, you know, business process reengineering to requirements and all that stuff. I want to see us do that as well. So, I'm going to stop there for, and I said it really fast, but I'm so proud that we are doing this because we want our students to be prepared. And Mr. Jackson, thank you for coming to join us today.
Absolutely.
Yes. She said so much, and she covered pretty much what I was going to say about aviation, but I want to also thank you guys. I mean, that was a lot of information, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, just definitely want to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for being here and being able to give us a flavor of what it looks like from a student's perspective. It's great to hear about the adults and all the theory and the things that we want to put in place, but to hear from a student in terms of how it's being applied and what's working well really makes it hit home. So, thank you for being here. Your future is so very bright, so we're excited to see you in two weeks going across that stage.
Yes.
But your future is so very bright. I wanted to pair it something, you said what? A week?
Yes, a week.
Oh, it's a week. But who's counting, right? Mr. Jackson's like, "No, no, no, it's a week." One week. I want to pair it something that Dr. Navarro has often said. While we focus on CTE and preparing kids for both career as well as college opportunities, this is not to say that when you get to college, you can't take these credentials and be a working student and be able to contribute towards your tuition, be able to help your parents in paying for school. So, this is not just an or, this is, it could be an and, both can be true. So, I'm very excited for all the opportunities that we're offering to our students. This is amazing. Back in, I think it was 2022, I want to say, there was a legislative proposal that I wrote to the commissioners in terms of how we use the Maryland Airport, and it included aviation, obviously, but mainly for agriculture, and thinking about how we're teaching kids drone technology specifically for agriculture, just thinking about the color of our county, the flavor of our county, and kind of where we have pockets of agriculture. So, I love the fact that we're finally kind of moving in that realm. So, very exciting. Wanted to ask just a few brief questions. On Slide two, you mentioned endorsement for graduates. I just wanted to ensure, do all of our CTE pathways offer opportunities for those endorsements? There were some very specific criteria that were there, and I want to ensure that all of them can qualify.
Yes, so all CTE pathways fall into, I think they have like five different categories for the actual CTE, but yes, if you finish your CTE pathway, then you can get the CTE endorsement.
Okay. Also, noted that for the case program, that it's going from a four-year program to a two-year program. Can you speak to why we're shifting to a two-year kind of program and moving away from four-year?
Sure. So, right now, it's one course per year, and so, what it's going to be is, actually, this is the model that's in a lot of other LEAs throughout the state, is they have the two-year programs at their technical high schools, and it allows for them to go in-depth more because they just get saturated. So, it's more time altogether, same amount of, truthfully, if you looked at the hours in the classroom, it's going to be similar, except now, it's going to be really, they get to really concentrate on it, they're with their cohort, they're there for a longer period of time instead of one period each year.
Okay. Did want to inquire, the majority of these programs you mentioned sort of start at the eighth-grade level, eighth graders are allowed to apply, but we have some eighth graders who truly just don't know. And I know we have several programs that offer the opportunity to apply at tenth grade. Do you know offhand which programs still allow the tenth-grade application?
Sure, yeah. So, we have, I think, six programs that you can apply to in tenth grade. So, that is pharmacy technician, physical rehab, automotive, right now, not interactive media anymore, that one just moved. It will be case, so the environmental program, and then also HBAC.
And barbary.
And barbary. And then, we also, in that same, when we talk to our tenth graders, we also talk about the early college opportunities. So, we really talk to them about all the diverse things that they can, and decisions they can make at that point. And so, like, within the early college, we also have pharmacy technician through there. We're looking at expanding ways for the trades as well through that program, and so, we've got medical coding also through there.
We're still trying to get students that don't want a early college degree but want the program such as auto mechanics or whatever at CSM to be able to work with them where they would end up taking their high school courses with us still in Charles County Public Schools to graduate, but take the certificate courses for the technical certificate at CSM. We're not quite there yet, we have a few other kinks we have to work out, but that's our goal, not next year, but the year after.
Yes. Yeah, sorry, as I say, just looking at the top, do you have maybe one other question?
Yeah, just one question, but thank you for the flag. Financial literacy, I know that it's a high school graduation requirement for students to complete half a credit. Could you speak to me about the Junior Achievement Program and how that aligns with our graduation requirements? Is that in addition to? Is that in lieu of? Like, what would that be?
Yeah, so it's in addition to. So, it's really, there's KMR standards that you hit in elementary, middle, and high school in regard to financial literacy, and it can be embedded, or it can be a standalone class. It's not required to be a standalone course. So, in that aspect, we are doing more in Charles County. And so, this is in addition to. We see the need, and we see the impact of it across the board for students to be able to navigate their careers successfully by getting it. So, any way that we can increase it, I think it would be beneficial. So, we're just looking for ways to strengthen, especially, we're seeing the need in elementary and middle, so when they go to high school and take that course, it's going to hit home more, it's going to make more sense, they can go deeper once they have that really isolated time within that content and curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you. How many of the board members have questions or comments? I just want to gauge, is this, do you have anything, Mr. Hancock?
Very quick.
Okay, and I misspoke a little while. Okay, everyone, if you could please make just one question or comment, because we do have, as I mentioned, the speakers for public forum. Yes, go ahead, please.
So, this is, I'll make it really short, it's for Mr. Jackson. You are amazing, and I promise you, somewhere as a kid, you was doing it, you were already doing it. If you can think back, yeah, I know, see, that's that early childhood part. So, congratulations, keep doing what you're doing, I'm so very proud of you. I hope that you all can get more, I think you were talking about participants, so that you can offer this to more students. I think it's very unfair that it's only zoned for certain different...
There's no zone for it, anyone can apply.
Okay, so...
There's only this many openings.
Right, okay, so, and I guess because I've heard a parent say, "Well, if we were in somewhere and we couldn't do this," and so, I just hope that everybody can get an opportunity to participate in some way, even where the doula was concerned. My best friend is one, I didn't know what in the world she was talking about, but she loves what she does, she's dedicated to it. But back to Mr. Jackson, congratulations, and I look forward to every wonderful thing that you will do.
Very quick, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It's always good to see CTE growing. Where we sit geographically, there's just so much opportunity out there for so many people, so thank you for the presentation. I just want to say to Mr. Jackson, your future is very, very bright. You're very knowledgeable in your trade, and you have characteristics that can't be taught. You can tell by your character and your humility that you have what it takes to go as far as you want in your life, and you have things that some people just can't learn. And just listening to you talk and watch how you carry and present yourself, if everyone were like you, we would be out of this world, man, so it's good to see, and best of luck in the future. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. My pleasure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. You know, CTE, I love CTE, too, you know, like Ms. Thomas, that's like my jam, it's always been my jam. I have two kids that went through CTE programs. My son is going to be applying in eighth grade next year, so definitely a huge proponent for CTE. I love all the changes. I've, lots of questions, but for the interest of time, I just want to say, I love the Reality Fair idea. I think that that was innovation on your part, on everybody's part, who really looked at, you know, what we saw, right, in other counties and said, "Well, maybe we can't do that, but we can do this." And that is what innovation really is, right? And I think that you took something, you took an idea, and you said, "Well, let's And I think that you took something, you took an idea, and you said, well, let's see how we can do this here with the resources that we have. And I just want to applaud you all for doing that, for thinking outside of the box, for really, you know, putting your heads together, coming up with the idea that, you know, we can use volunteers and really at minimal cost to be able to give our students that opportunity. So, you know, kudos to you all for doing that. And yes, Mr. Jackson, you are truly a rock star, and you're truly an example of what Charles County Public Schools produces every year. Just excellent students who are eager to learn, and good for you for taking an interest and taking ownership of what you want to do with your future, and really following through, because, you know, doing an apprenticeship is not, is not easy, you know? And I'm sure with a thousand machines and whatever else you were doing, IT is not my jam, right? But it sounds like a lot of work, you know what I mean? And you have to be meticulous, you have to be detail-oriented, you have to be organized. So, there's a lot of skills that you need, like Mr. Hancock said, that, you know, some people just really don't grasp those, at least maybe until they're much, much older than you. And so, clearly, your future is super bright, and I'm just really proud of you. So, congratulations again. Thank you, Ms. Butler Washington.
Thank you. Yes, kudos to you, and welcome to the IT world. In your future, you can be able to direct it any way you want to direct it. I worked at a Pentagon, now I'm at the state, you can do it all. So, just make sure that you know that once you get your final degree, you set your goal. And I'm so glad that you put it in your hands to do it. So, now to Ms. Brandt. I thank you for listening to me about financial literacy. I know I had you in that room all day long when I first got here, but thank you, thank you, thank you for just doing your due diligence and making sure that, you know, whatever I was saying, you went out to look at it, and you make sure that it was right for Charles County. I'm just happy you're talking about it, because financial literacy, whether you go to college, whether you don't go to college, if you got a foundation for financial literacy, you're going to be okay. Because that money that you make, you're going to know how to manage that money. So, I think that's a big, big kudos. And for Ms. Jones, you set my life on, because you said that you're in sixth grade, you're letting them take the Zelo and making sure that they set the goals and make sure they want to know where they're going to go. That's crucial, because when you're in middle school, you know, you know what you want to do. And then it changes a little bit, and then you do it again, and you figure out what you want to do. And so, if all kids think about it, and if they set their goals of where they want to go, that sheet that's on the graduation, where you see some got stars and they're going to college, and then the majority of them don't have nothing, that is the population I'm worrying about. Because I want to make sure when they come into the community, that they have something to do too. So, when we shrink it and make it where all the kids get to go do something, that's when we see progress. That's when we can say, well, job, well, job done, and we're doing good for every student. And so, that's the goal, is to make sure what you're doing, to make sure that all the kids in the school system will be able to know where they're going when they leave our school. And so, that to me is the biggest takeaway. Thank you.
Do either of our student members have anything, comments, or questions? No? Okay. Oh, go ahead, please. Just turn your mic.
Oh, okay.
At the top, just bend it forward.
Oh, okay. Congratulations to you for like all your achievement in CTE program, that's really cool. And also, I just wanted to say, like, I really love the Zelo program, I really like that. Because I know that, like, for me, I had like 50 million things I like wanted to do, and then I didn't want to do it. So, I think it's really cool that, like, you have them take it once, and then they can take it again. Because like when you're in high school, your ideas change so much on what you want to do. So, I really like the idea, and I also really like the CTE program, I really like that program. Because I love how they get a chance to like explore different parts of their career, what they might want to do early on, because that's like a big problem. I know that like a lot of my friends, they're like, yeah, I don't know what I want to do, or I don't know what I want to do in the future. So, I think that Zelo, for one thing, really helps, and then the CTE program too. Like, I like that they have the opportunity to explore in 10th grade, because a lot of people miss it in eighth grade and they don't do it. So, 10th grade as well is also really good. Yeah, that's it, though.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick things, as already been said, you are a rock star, sir. We are so proud of you. You're always welcome to come back, although I suspect you're probably not going far. And you seem pretty happy, I'm going to speak that into existence. But yeah, we are so proud of you, and we love hearing stories like this. And we know the village that it takes to get you to this point, and all the people that have supported you, and very much appreciate that these opportunities continue to increase. And speaking of Ms. Sydney Robinson, I believe, from, related to, I know you know Ms. Sydney, we were on that call from the Charles County Chamber of Commerce around the Maryland service here. They're very excited to work with us, to see how we can partner this and expand opportunities. So, I sent that to Dr. Navarro. One final quick thought, as I'm hearing all of these things, and starting in middle school and having these students start considering early what they want to do, don't forget the mentor piece. I think that is a very, very crucial point to have, you know, whether it's a group of volunteers or the people already in the schools, pairing them with people. So that as they're, you know, and if they go back and forth from astronaut to attorney, it's fine. Wherever you land, there should be someone to help you, to answer questions, to guide you on that path, to help with some of that reality checking, so that it's not something that they're kind of finding their way constantly in college. They should already have a pretty solid foundation, so, or, you know, workforce, whatever that looks like, yes. But thank you all so, so very much, this was fantastic. I appreciate you. Don't go, Pharmister Louts, Mrs. Schwartz. And we'll take a break after public forum, a bio break.
Or read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves, statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during the forum to statements made by speakers, when appropriate, CCPS staff may address speakers' concerns directly. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education, agenda items, or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personnel matters, pending potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. This evening, we have two speakers. The first speaker is Sean Heil.
Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, Superintendent Dr. Navarro, my Board of Education, CCPS executive staff, and distinguished guests. Last week, I discussed elementary schools and school psychologists. Now, as we plan for next year, I want to address another important issue, class size. It's been suggested that class sizes may increase as high as 32 to one or even 34 to one. Research clearly indicates that class size of fewer than 21 is, 20 to one is most impactful. In 2016, William Mathis published in the National Education Policy Center of the University of Colorado that, quote, "Class sizes between 15 to 18, with some variation depending upon the subject, can be beneficial," close quote. He argues that, quote, "While reducing class size may be costly, it could ultimately be the most cost-effective policy in the long run," close quote. Additionally, an article titled "Small Classes: Big Possibilities," published by the School Superintendent Association in 2010, highlights the conclusive research supporting smaller class sizes. It has been found that classes, students in classes of about 15 students achieve better outcomes compared to those in larger classes. They tend to achieve higher test scores, participate more in school, show improved behavior, and retain many benefits from early class size reductions in their later years of schooling. I urge we prioritize keeping class sizes small in elementary schools, especially in grades four and five, where critical skills in reading and math are continuing to be developed. Consider the workload also. Grading 20 students, let's say, takes an hour, but increasing the class size by 10 could extend that to an hour and a half, resulting in additional, almost half workday for the teachers to grade a single assignment. This increase in workload can lead a teacher to burnout, especially for less experienced educators. The reality is that providing feedback on assignments will take longer. Due to time restraints, I cannot fully address how large class sizes would affect student behavior, a continuing issue we all work to address. Moreover, we must consider classroom space. Some classrooms are simply not designed for 30 students, let alone 34. Are we accounting for spatial logistical issues as we evaluate these numbers? I do have a couple requests, as always. Please limit class size increases as much as possible, especially in early grades where foundational skills are being developed. If limiting class size is not feasible, what adjustments can be made to lighten educators' workloads in response to a larger class size? At the commissioner's budget hearing, one educator mentioned choosing Charles County partly for its smaller class sizes. We need to give him and others like him a reason to stay.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Kevin Gibson. Good evening, I'm Kevin Gibson. I have a second grader at Craig Elementary. The superintendent's revised proposed budget includes a budget reduction of $1 million by adjusting the staffing ratios in fourth and fifth grades. I presume the reduction will be accomplished by increasing the number of students in each fourth and fifth grade class. Tonight, you're reviewing a new social studies resource for the fourth and fifth grade. The reviews of this resource note that it is a more challenging read, and indeed, even a cursory review shows it to be at a seventh grade level. Unfortunately, you're pairing a challenging resource with two grades where reading is a challenge. Your own data reveals that on the Winter Eye Ready Assessment, 62% of fourth grade students and 62% of fifth grade students were reading below grade level. At the same time that you are increasing class size, you're looking at giving struggling readers more challenging resources. Meanwhile, small group reading time has decreased from one hour to 40 minutes. In the one-hour model, a teacher can meet with three groups, while in the 40-minute model, it's more likely they'll only be able to meet with two groups. Small group reading is a time to provide at-level instructional support for students in a smaller setting. Imagine a classroom with 32 students, where each group is eight students. With four groups in 40 minutes, who does the teacher choose not to meet with? The students who are reading above grade level, the on-grade level students, the students on the bubble, or the students that are so far behind that they aren't going to catch up? Please keep in mind that classes can rarely be broken into perfect even groups. Often, in order to facilitate being able to see groups, large groups of mixed ability students are created. The effect of this is that students, again, are not receiving the specific reading instruction they need. Aside from the conflicts about how one teacher is going to provide meaningful reading instruction to so many students, is the problem of space. If you take time to talk to elementary teachers, they'll tell you how full their rooms are now, let alone if you add four, or eight, or 10 more students. You might say, okay, just add more students to each small group. But most of our small group tables are designed for eight students. The science of reading tells us that challenges with literacy only grow when students leave third grade reading below grade level. In what is a critical year for our students, fourth grade, your Eye Ready data shows students are indeed struggling. These same students who need more help are the same students who will now likely be getting less help as their teacher spreads their time across more students. I appreciate that there is a finite amount of money in the budget, and you're trying to squeeze water from a rock. I don't object, I just think you're squeezing the wrong rock. The same students who need more help are going to be getting less help. Instead of their classes getting smaller so they can get more instruction, they're getting bigger. I urge the board to find cost savings in other spots, and rather than increase fourth and fifth grade class sizes, reduce them. I would encourage the board to ask what the projected class sizes will be in the fourth and the fifth grade, and to share that information publicly. I suspect parents may have strong feelings about it if they know what those numbers are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, board members, it is 6:34. If we could please take 11 minutes and come back at 6:45. All right, take us off the air, please. Welcome back, Mr. Louts, Ms. Brandt, hello. So, are we continuing on to the CCMA Certified Clinical Medical Assistant?
Yes.
Yep.
So, we are here today to present a new textbook for next year, and we're sorry we're, you know, so late in the season, but we just got information, you know, the pathway was changing from the state, and we're still kind of waiting to get a finalized pathway from the state. But knowing that we're going to have to add additional content and material to the course, Ms. Brand went ahead and informed a committee to go ahead and start looking at textbooks for next year that would meet the requirement that is going to be added. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Brand to present the recommendation from her committee.
All right, so Certified Clinical Medical Assistant, for this pathway, by the end, students are eligible to sit for the Clinical Medical Assistant exam. They will have opportunity to obtain college credits, and will experience an internship within this pathway. So, the reason that we're discussing this right now is the Certified Nursing Assistant Program, the CNA program, is hitting barriers due to new regulations from the Maryland Board of Nursing. The new regulations, which have not been formally released, require programs to be certified in both GNA and CNA. This results in additional requirements on instructors and internship experiences.
GNA is?
Yeah, the acronym. The geriatric. Oh, geriatric, got you. So, geriatric and certified nurse, got you, okay. And so, and the intern experience would change as well, to have to have the geriatric setting, and that our programs will not meet. So, with those issues, and the other hindrances are, and MSDE has been pushing back and asking for things to be regulated and explained and put into writing, and they're just waiting and waiting and waiting. So, nothing has been formalized. And the barrier and how this could end up very much impeding the outcomes of our students is if they stick to the timeline and the regulations that they have outlined so far, it will affect our students starting next October, which means those students will be impacted with the certifications they're able to get. So, we wanted to be as proactive as possible to gain these little layers and make a pivot to continue a program that still will meet the needs of our students and provide some viable outcomes within the years that they're with us. So, a question, Ms. Brandt, is the concern around pivoting to add GNA, the instructor, the instructors that are able to offer it, or is it the timeframe? Are we ultimately doing away with CNA altogether? So, for the instructors, they do have to have specific experience in their, in their resume to be able to meet that criteria. And the other part is they do have to have an internship at a senior, yes, and the, at the nursing homes have to have specific, meet specific criteria. And there are none in Charles County that meet that criteria currently. So, there's just some really strong barriers that would be, that would impede the outcomes. Well beyond our control, it sounds like. Yeah, and so, overall, I would just like to speak to the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. So, where, yes, those students get that CNA within there, and that is a stepping stone. Those students go on to get a variety of different careers within the medical field. It is very exploratory, but the CNA is not usually their stopping ground. It is a step on the way for them to explore the medical field. And so, that's why I think that the pivot to the Certified Clinical Medical Assistant will allow for that exploration, a certification, again, as we were talking, something that you can utilize as you continue on in the field. Both CNA and CCMA make wages that are very hard to live off of. So, they really are seen as aspects that are a stepping stone in that career field. So, this is why this transition makes sense. Absolutely. All right, so our proactive teachers who are here tonight, they saw this coming down the pike, and they were very, very proactive. And so, they started to visit other local education agencies, counties, seeing the CCMA programs, talking to people to see how they were handling this information, and they really did gain a lot of insight. And so, they were able to identify possible available texts by talking to those other districts. They also met with the National Healthcare Association, which provides the testing and the certification credentialing to figure out that, and the College of Southern Maryland that does have this pathway as well. So, they were able to really see what was in place and what would be necessary to be successful. So, they did then have a committee meet to review the possible textbooks and resources that they identified. The review involved an explanation of the selection process. They reviewed the, it says four textbooks, actually three, and resources, and publishers answered any questions from the committee members. The committee included faculty, parents, students that are currently in the CNA program, and then also people from industry. All right, so we got three textbooks that were reviewed, and they are listed there. All resources were evaluated based on alignment to the National Health Science Standards, state learning standards, age appropriateness, and readability. Instructional supports, equity, and technical support and access. There we go. All right, so I'm going to go through the feedback for each of the texts. So, the first one, Hartman's Medical Assisting, was accessible to all students, but was written at a very introductory level and would not be, would not challenge the learners. Hartman Publishing did not send a representative to the meeting. Customer service was also noted as lacking by the committee. The second one, Medical Assisting Administrative and Clinical Procedures with Anatomy and Physiology, included more breadth of knowledge. However, the committee felt the text was written above the high school level and may prove too challenging for some learners. Also noted, was lack of accompanying supports, like a workbook or online resources. This text did not include any learning supports or strategies for scaffolding content. And when we did talk to the publisher about this and really asked if there is additional aspects that could be included, they mentioned this type of material not offered, because this was a college-level text. So, the third, Medical Assisting Administration, Administrative and Clinical Competencies, appeared to be the best fit. Committee felt that the text included challenging materials while still at a reading level that was accessible to high school students. The representative from Cengage Publishers also joined our meeting, introduced available online supports, which include an electronic copy of the text, MindTap software, an electronic health record where students can practice administrative skills, as well as multiple practice exams. Overall, the committee noted a lack of diversity included within the text. So, based on the data that we collected, we are recommending. So based on the data that we collected, we are recommending Medical Assisting, it's quite a book, Administrative and Clinical Competencies from Sengage Publishing. So at this point, I would request to put the book on display for public review. We can also, we do have it electronically, so we can send that out for review as well. And then present public comments and vote during the June work session if appropriate.
One question. When you, they note the lack of diversity, tell me more about what that looks like.
I think it was mostly the pictures. So there are some, I mean, they do, it was the pictures, right? Yeah. So the pictures just seemed, it seemed dated a little bit. Like they had updated probably content, but probably not everything. So it seemed pretty dated within. So, yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? Ms. Thomas, did you have something, Ms. Smith?
No.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, and then Vice Chair Kramer.
I just have one quick question. You talked about the changes that are going, do we have any, any programs that are like, with the EMT? I know Charles County has EMT. Do we do that where we're engaging? So that's maybe another opportunity for students to have some experience with the nursing, medical, et cetera. That was my own question.
Yeah, we have Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute, and they can get the firefighting EMT certifications through that CT program. Yep.
And does that start in ninth grade, or?
It's actually, it starts in 11th.
11th, okay.
And I think when, was it you that visited North Point with me? I think we saw some of those students. All right, thank you. Vice Chair Kramer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this. Just two quick questions. So I see that in determining the options for textbook resources, we consulted with CSM, but do we consider any other local colleges like PGCC that also have these programs? I know Howard also, I think, has a program, just because it might have provided us with some additional options. And then my second question is, what year was the book published?
So it is new. Let me see, I think it was 2020, 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you know the answer to the first question about?
They did not. So we went for the other county programs currently, and then colleges of Southern Maryland, but that's definitely something that we can ask and review.
We'll do that before we come with feedback.
Definitely. And then just in the future, just consider, because I know CSM is always our go-to, and it's great, right? Because regionally, they're right here. But, you know, for, you know, diversity in thought processes and, you know, options, it might just be.
We'll reach out. It's a great suggestion.
Might be great to do that. So thank you.
That was a great suggestion. Did you have?
I did. Healthcare is something that I don't know a great deal about, aside from obviously scheduling my own medical appointments and for my family. But what I have, I'm a whole doctor. But what I have paid attention to are, as science has evolved, and as we, as a society have evolved, thinking about the racial biases that are in medicine, and the things that have been disproven, and how race has been a barrier, especially when we think about kidney function and access to medicine and access to a variety of tests and kind of what they mean, especially when you apply it to minorities versus the majority. And I'm curious how the textbook has been updated to take into consideration these factors and things that we have learned over time are actually racist, and ensuring that we're not perpetuating it with our students.
So that was part of the rubric that we utilized when analyzing the different texts. And I'm not going to be able to pull the information probably right now, but we did, we did look at different aspects within that, and then pulled out the different, to make sure that it was covered as far as how the patient care would handle or be taught, you know, the different aspects of diversity.
We'll update you when we come back next time to show you how the rubric was shared.
I can share the rubric, too.
No, I'd love to see that. Yes, thank you.
That's why I asked the question about what the lack of diversity looks like, because that's hugely problematic.
Yeah. Well, because it was interesting, because it really was, I think, simply the pictures that we were seeing, because then this one did go into the instruction of making sure that you were looking through that lens within the field. So that was, it scored high in that aspect, but I think it was the visualization aspect that it was lacking diversity.
All right, thank you. You had something, Ms. Bella Washington?
Yes. Will there be a link to this booklet? Okay, thank you.
We'll send it to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Still you, Mr. Louts. Social Studies Curriculum, and I believe Mr. Tuttle will be joining. Oh, Mr. Hopkins, okay. Sorry. Disassumed, Mr. Tuttle. Welcome, Mr. Hopkins.
So we are back here today to share some additional information about some of the questions that you've asked, and then later tonight, you'll have the opportunity to vote on this and whether we want to pass it and move forward. Alan?
Good evening. Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, board members, Dr. Navarro. Again, I'm Alan Hopkins. I'm the Social Studies Research Teacher for Charles County Public Schools. And this evening, I'm here to present some public feedback from the curricular resource that we are requesting for grades four and five social studies called Impact Social Studies. It's a McGraw-Hill product, specifically the U.S. History: Making a New Nation, Maryland Edition Resource. This next slide is just a recap of feedback I shared with you last time we met, just some comments from our Resource Review Committee justifying their choice of the McGraw-Hill resource over some of the other ones we looked at. Specifically, the committee pointed out the fact that this resource has a strong connection to the MSD framework, content and skills that students are required to learn in fourth and fifth grade, that there are interdisciplinary connections with reading, writing, social, emotional learning, speaking and listening, as well as inquiry-based approach aligned with best practices in social studies instruction. There are diverse perspectives on historical events featured throughout the resource, and it aligns nicely with our existing technologies such as Canvas, Clever. Yeah, I got it. I set the shift a little bit. The resource was available for public viewing and feedback from April 28 through May 19, both digitally and hard copy. The website and social media channels advertise how to access this resource and provide feedback. In addition, we were able to share this resource during a combined meeting of the Equity Task Force, PTO Council, and Citizen Parent Advisory Committee last week, where we solicited feedback from those groups as well. And then direct emails were sent to the community stakeholder groups listed there on this slide. There were 18 respondents that provided feedback for this resource. Three of them were parents. We had one representative of the Charles County Commission for Women, one representative of the Charles County NAACP. We had four respondents that identified themselves as Charles County community members or residents, and we had nine teachers or staff that also provided us with feedback on the resource. Of the 18 responses, 14 favored adoption of this resource. That support came from two parents, one member of the NAACP, one representative of the Commission for Women, and all nine CCPS teachers and staff members that provided comments. The four critical responses came from a parent and three Charles County community members. In the next few slides, I'm just going to sum up some of the feedback that we received, starting with the positive. And what I did is just categorized things into three different categories. The first one being interdisciplinary connections, which we know is important when it comes to social studies. Social studies is not taught in a silo. It involves connecting to reading and writing as well. So we wanted there to be strong interdisciplinary connections. And so the feedback seemed to indicate that there were strong connections to reading and writing. Many skills that are reinforced through the Impact Resources can directly support students on IMCAP, including vocabulary and writing instruction and support. The positive feedback also highlighted differentiation and critical thinking within the resource, that there are opportunities for teachers to differentiate their instruction, promote collaboration, and encourage students to think critically about social studies topics embedded throughout that resource. There is thorough support for multilingual learners, and resources can be differentiated by student between three instructional levels, approaching on-grade level and above-grade level. And there are multiple opportunities for students to share and develop ideas together embedded throughout the lessons and activities as well. Finally, supporters, go to the next one. Finally, supporters also felt that the materials presented a diverse history through age-appropriate content, that multiple perspectives on historical events are presented throughout the Maryland-specific content. So if you remember in my last presentation, I talked about how this was a national resource, but McGraw-Hill had embedded some very specific Maryland content. So, for example, how Marylanders supported the Revolutionary War effort, or historically black colleges and universities in the state of Maryland, for example, so we could really hone in on that Maryland focus in our United States history. And there, one commenter also mentioned that it seemed to be careful attention was made to recount events to the eyes of the people rather than simply those in power. As I said before, if you want to go to the next one, not all the feedback was positive. We did have four critical responses, and I categorized these into three areas as well for you. One, there were several commenters that pointed out some errors in the digital text that they were reviewing, everything from spelling and grammar. There was one instance where one of the images was overlapping text. It just seemed like there was almost like a glitch in the technical presentation of the resource. There was another specific concern raised over the placement of quotation marks in the phrase enslaved people in a text about the Underground Railroad, and concern was raised about a map activity in that same Underground Railroad section, and whether it was appropriate for students to assume historical roles during instruction. There were also concerns raised about the text level. One person in particular that provided feedback felt the text may be too difficult for our students that are reading one or multiple grades below grade level, and so they were a little bit concerned about the level of difficulty. And then the last concern, there were some comments about oversimplification of historical events and representation of some groups. Some responses were critical of how history is presented throughout the resource. These respondents felt the Impact Resource oversimplified historical events, misrepresented the contributions of some groups. While a lot of topics are covered in the resource, they worry that the lack of depth may make it difficult for students to fully understand the whole history that is being presented. So with that, I will go ahead and answer any questions that you have about the resource.
Any questions or comments? Okay, yes.
I just wanted to ask, which groups do they think were misrepresented in the text?
Specifically, there were comments made about indigenous history, as well as, from some of the other comments, African-American history as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can you say a little bit more about that? How so?
Which part?
Yeah, when you're saying that the groups were misrepresented, do you have, like, more detailed examples?
Just that they felt that not, there was not equal time given to the history of some of the contributors of early American history, specifically indigenous groups. I mentioned the example about the inappropriate use of quotation marks in that phrase enslaved people. I can speak to that, actually, because that bothered me as well. And so I reached out to the textbook company and received a response. I can share with you a little bit about their response as to why they, why that happened, if you don't mind me reading a paragraph.
Yes, thank you, sir.
So this is from Katie McClarty, who's the Chief Academic Officer at McGraw-Hill. And she wrote, regarding the paragraph on page 384 of the Grade Five Research Companion, we've identified this as an error. Upon investigation, we discovered that the first printing, meaning the first printing of the book, read enslaved persons. When we instructed our vendor to replace persons, and persons is in quotation marks, with people, also in quotation marks, in a subsequent printing, the quotations were inadvertently carried with the word, which was not our intent, and the error was not immediately detected. This error was subsequently discovered and is in the correction process for the print and digital versions. We recognize that this error could be upsetting to people and have worked to fix this as soon as it was discovered. We appreciate that you called this to our attention. Any materials implemented in Back to School 2025 will be the correct versions.
Okay. And the follow-up question about the, you know, the stop and check and asking students to pretend to be a conductor? How would we, a CCPS, handle something like that or any kind of role-playing?
Well, we do not condone, we don't have activities and lessons that involve any role-play, particularly on sensitive topics such as that. If you don't mind me, again, reading.
I was going to ask, did they have a response for that as well?
Well, I can, let me first read to you the stop and check question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It says, it's, I know it's very difficult to see, but it's a map activity, and the map features routes of the Underground Railroad. And the stop and check question says, imagine you are a conductor on the Underground Railroad. Draw a simple map and plan a route to guide a group of escaped enslaved people. Consider geography and the need to rest or hide. Explain to a partner how you chose the route.
And what was their response? Did they have, did they have a response? Did you ask them about that?
I can read you that paragraph as well.
Yes, please.
Sure. Regarding the stop and check prompt on page 385, we fully appreciate concerns about role plays or reenactments, and have intentional editorial guidelines in this area. This prompt was designed to provide students with an inquiry that applies geography skills in the context of historical knowledge, in support of several geography, history, and skills and process standards outlined in Maryland's social studies framework. Accordingly, the prompt is intended to establish a specific context of time and place for geographic inquiry and discussion, and does not encourage role-based interaction.
I don't like that response at all. I'm not, one second, Ms. Bella Washington. So would we then instruct students to just completely disregard that paragraph because they would see it? How would we handle that as CCPS? I know you said we don't encourage role-playing.
Absolutely.
How would we address it, then?
Right. I, well, so this is a curricular resource, it's not a curriculum. So the next step, if this were to be adopted, would be formulate lessons, lesson plans, unit plans around the resource, not using every part of it. This would be an example of a part that I would not use in the curriculum lessons that I give to our teachers and they instruct their students with.
All right. Ms. Bella Washington?
Yes, Madam Chair. The wording in here that says, based on this book, there is no evil in the world. Great Carol was taken to promote George Washington as the leader of the country needed. The range of topics was impressive, but so limited in depth that I cannot believe children would learn much of anything. What that makes me think of is the books that I was brought up on. I knew nothing about African-American history or the important people who affected my life until I went to college. And so I don't want to continue on that trajectory. So what we should look for is to make sure that everyone is accountable in the books when we, when our students are learning. Everybody here should have somebody in there that represents them. And I know there's a lot of books out there, because I got my grandkids some of those books, so they know everybody, not just African-American, you know, they know everybody. Because what I want them to learn is, everyone is different, everyone is seen, and everyone is important. So we should not knock down any one race or anything. So a book like this, to me, continue on to tradition of what we was used to doing. So I just wanted to make that very clear. Thank you.
And I agree with you 100%.
The other thing, just to let you know, we did check on the editing, but one of the things I asked Alan is like, we would never give a resource of, you know, misspellings or anything like that to our students, especially from a learning institution. So they did say they corrected all of that, and that we would receive a corrected version of online resources.
All of the, yeah, the errors were all in the online version. The print version didn't have any errors that I've noticed. And I will admit, I didn't read it necessarily cover to cover, but the comments that I received didn't speak to any errors in the print edition, other than the quotation marks around people, which will be removed before we receive those paper copies in the fall.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Smalls.
My concern is, because children know how to read, that they would read that part on their own, about the acting out part. So I think that would be my only concern, them reading it for themselves, and then it poses other questions. So I guess my question would be, could it be removed altogether?
We'd have to ask the textbook.
Yeah, that would have to be a question for the company itself.
We can ask.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To that point, the children would be receiving the print version, right? So I'm assuming that this would already be in place by the time they receive it, is that correct?
The changes?
Well, not just the changes, but whatever, as it exists now, is this the version that we would be receiving?
Yes.
Yeah. So, because I know, you know, they print with so many and so far ahead, so.
Yeah. Well, and like I said, we have been assured that the, they are printing new versions of the book.
Okay.
So.
Oh, okay, so we will get a new printed version. I know you said the update. Okay.
That's my understanding, that any resource that we receive as part of this purchase will have the corrections that we've asked for.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, just full disclosure, I will have a fourth grader in a few months. And so some, I appreciate the positive feedback, but I think the critical feedback is even more important, because these are some of the very subtle nuances that our children will pick up on, and. And my concern is perpetuating any negative stereotypes, or, you know, downplaying any of these experiences is deeply problematic for me.
I, I'm actually surprised they still have the role-play in these textbooks after all of the negative publicity that has been out there the last couple of years.
Right. Yeah, agreed. Anything else? Oh, Ms. Thomas?
Just one, a small point. Because we know that role-play is just an, an area that, you know, has the potential to go in the wrong direction, it would be nice if we could, to my colleague Dr. Smalls' point, just go back and say, you know, we know that, that the role-play is problematic. Perhaps they would consider removing role-pays anywhere in the text, so that we don't, you know, have this kind of challenge at all, because we, we just have seen it play out very poorly. And particularly because you, you've already stated that we're not adding this as something that we would even utilize in our curriculum at all. So it being there really doesn't serve, serve a purpose, so perhaps we could just, you know, submit that inquiry. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know if they've gotten similar feedback from other jurisdictions. I don't know if that's something that they shared. Who else uses it, do you know?
I do not know of any of our neighboring LEAs. They use some of their programs for lower-grade levels, for second, third grade. But I believe, I was told the, the diocese schools, Catholic diocese schools might use some of this, but as far as anybody local, I don't know the data.
Thank you, sir. Last call? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Very much, appreciate it. Right. Here at that point. All right. Okay, so we have already had our public forum. So next up, an information item, Indian Head Community Feedback on Renaming. This is one and only Dr. Maria Navarro?
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. As you recall, you, per your policy 7230, you charge that I go to the community and inquire to the Indian Head community their interest to potentially rename their school. If you recall, this slide shows the trajectory of why this, this came up to the board. And, and following policy 7230, the next step that the board was asked, or has to do per their policy, is to have the superintendent bring back information, and that is why I'm here this evening. We did a timeline for the community engagement. You can see what the timeline there was, where we did a virtual presentation, which we turned around and posted on the school's website. And along with that presentation, we had a survey, which we put also, so that publicly, the, the public could watch the virtual presentation, and could understand why the board was asked to engage with the potential renaming of Indian Head Elementary. Students, staff, and community members were surveyed, and so I am here to present the survey results. We, before I do the, the survey results, we did receive some communications, either with materials that were dropped off at the board office, or with emails to board mail, which is where we asked the community to send emails to communicate with certain things that we're looking for feedback from on behalf of the board. We got one letter from the town of Indian Head dated May 1st in opposition to school renaming. We had a total of 61 signed petitions from Charles County residents in support of renaming the school. The petition also said the highway, Indian Head Highway, so it was a, it was a, a form petition, and it, it did address both of those issues. It wasn't specific to the school, it was both the highway and the elementary school. We had two emails that were in support of renaming, one email that we received that was in opposition to the renaming. And then we conducted a survey. You can see here the total survey respondents. We had 211 individuals. We, we left the survey open for close to a month, and we had 211 individuals complete the survey. Students were part of the survey process for fourth and fifth grade only. The largest portion of feedback that we got was from students attending Indian Head Elementary, because we gave them a, a presentation, an age-appropriate presentation, and then they were able to take the survey afterwards individually. You can see the breakdown of the people that participated. One note is, when we had community members, if people identified as community members, we noted that nine of them were from Indian Head, Maryland. Twelve others noted themselves from somewhere in Charles County, and two were from outside of Charles County. When we asked, we always ask if, if the presentations are clear. More for additional feedback as we go out to the community and do these presentations. Did we explain the why the board is seeking the school's name change? And you see that we had 70% agree or disagree that, that it was a, a good presentation. The strongly disagree or disagree, there's an appendix to this PowerPoint, I won't break down everybody's responses, you can, you can see that it's posted on Board Docs. When we went in and unpacked the disagree or strongly disagree, a lot of the feedback was more, more around the issue of not wanting to change or wanting to change, rather than the presentation wasn't clear. We did get some feedback, I got some feedback from some community members, that perhaps the full history of the, of how the name came to be, and how Native American populations that reside in that geographical area were not as strongly represented in the initial presentation. So we made, made some changes to the remaining presentations as we noted that, that specific feedback. From the survey, when we asked everybody to, to say whether or not the board should consider renaming the school, we had about 116 responses, about 59% disagreed with the name change. They do not want the name of this, of the elementary school to change. About 55 people, or about 28% agree that it should change, and about 24 individuals had no opinion. So some people might say, well, were, were those mostly the students? Well, no, our students are very, very bright, and they have a lot of opinions. And so I'm just going to quickly go through the distribution by respondents. You see a very similar, when we asked the students, actually is a little bit of a similar distribution, in terms of 53% disagreed with changing the name of the school, and about 35% agreed, and about 12% really had no, no other way. And sometimes, sometimes an option of like, I, it doesn't really matter, is an option, and so we wanted to capture that as well. You see the distribution there for what individuals as parent or family members noted. And then staff, it was probably our highest percentage that disagreed with changing of the name. Community members, a less number of community members, about 60% disagreed, about 35% agreed with changing of the name. And then we did have some students that were alumni, so we reached out to the Smallwood lackey community of, of our students, and we had a couple of lackey high school students that took, took us up on the survey and responded. You can see the results there. And then when we asked, what are the reasons, if you support the renaming of Indian Head, what are the reasons for that? And you can see the various reasons. A, a lot of it was, you know, this idea of keeping with the core values. It's important that renaming happened, it's a process that's long overdue. Other things that were noted in open, in open responses were around the importance of changing this name. There was a lot of interest around changing the name to reflect a Native, Native American communities, and, and being able to name them specifically in a potential change. When, when we asked the reasons for not supporting the name and the renaming of Indian Head, the cost came up, the current name is supported, I think that was our highest number, a lot of people noted that the current name actually is supported by the community, they don't want a name change. It would, it would start a process of renaming, was it, other reasons. Now, they could, they could identify multiple reasons, it wasn't just select one, it was check all that apply. The, the others, a lot of open comments, like the, the town doesn't, it was named after the town, and we don't want the name changed, we, as a community, were happy with the name change. I mean, with the current name, excuse me. So I went back, as part of the policy, I needed to bring back to you a cost of school name change. So we have learned a lot from the, from actually implementing the cost and doing the costs for changing of Smallwood, renaming of Smallwood. One of the things that we learned is that we had a little bit of an underestimation of the cost to actually change the, the names. And so for this, there is some cost to our systems. So you see Oracle, our best friend. And, and you see a big wide range of $25,000 to $50,000. Really what that means as a placeholder is anytime we are going to change names in data systems, we will have to do some level of upgrade to the Oracle systems for functionality of where all of these different programs relate. We think it's an initial version of how much it'll cost. It's still a very high and early estimate. So I, I, I want you to know that this is a, a very early estimate. We will actually know how much it actually costs us to rename an existing building, once we fully go through all of the details with Smallwood, and we honestly haven't fully done that yet, but we wanted to give you sort of the worst-case scenario. The school marquee is not a digital marquee, those are about 50,000 to 60,000. And so, and so just know that this is the, the marquee that currently exists for the school system. So what happens next, as you recall from the process that we did with Smallwood, the board can choose to, well, the board, I believe last time, took a series of meetings before it made a decision whether or not. So I think it says that you have to have a series of at least three meetings before you make a decision as a board, at least, but not anymore, to even entertain potentially renaming and bring in an action item forward as a board. You can also make a decision to not pursue it as a board. And that is my update to you this evening. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Thomas?
Thank you so much. I have one question about the Oracle cost, and probably one comment. If it costs you that much, we have a problem, and we need to talk to somebody. It should not cost you that much money because the way that product is created, you should be able to do system admin configurations on your own. So I really want to deeply investigate why it would cost that much. And not just for this, but for anything. It should not. So I just want to put that out there as a flag, that we need to do more investigation and figure out, because we will have continued things that we have to update and change. It, it's in the core record, right? In, in the core record of how they established the book of records, so we need to have that conversation, so we're not overspending.
Yeah, and we can follow up with what we believe those costs will actually be as we work through, but the team that met, once the board made the, the, the final decision on what the name for renaming of Smallwood is, they are now working to implement that, so I can give you an adjusted cost once we have that as well.
You just need to go back and fight for it to be cheaper, because that's not right.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick clarifying question, because I know we've talked about this a couple times. So what, what would this meeting be considered in terms of the series of meetings? Are we on the second meeting?
No, so this is the meeting where it's a, where, based on the policy, and I'm going to ask Mr. Schwartz to join me, where based on the policy, this is where you get a sense of the, of, of canvassing the community itself.
Right.
Last time, and, and I'm going to ask Eric to, to speak to how we did Smallwood the, the last time, just to make sure I, I recall correctly.
This doesn't count as one of the meetings, we have three additional meetings. In the third meeting out, you would have the vote at the earliest.
Okay.
Always extend it further.
Right, thank you, yeah. I know, this is only our second time considering this, so I'm just a little fuzzy, I want to make sure I was correct. So I just want to say thank you for the, the engagement, and so you're, you've done your surveying and all of the outline, the engagement efforts that are outlined in the policy, correct?
Yes.
So there wouldn't be anything else after this, except for an opportunity for the public to come to speak at public forum, or send us emails, things like that, correct?
The last time we did this, at each successive meeting between, in those three meetings, Dr. Navarro came back with any additional feedback that the board had received.
Right, okay, that's right, I remember that with Smallwood. Okay, perfect. Well, then, I guess if the community still has feedback, I would just say this is a call to you to, you know, reach out, you know, send an email, come to public forum, you know, let the board know what your thoughts are, if you haven't weighed in, so, thank you.
And just to clarify about the three meetings, so we're talking, not three meetings as much as three board meetings, not including work sessions typically. So we're looking at June, August, September, so potentially voting on October?
At the earliest.
At the earliest, okay, I just wanted to clarify. And I believe Mr. Burke had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe on, during one of the earlier presentations about the school, a question was brought up about the mascot of the school. And I wanted to ask, is there anything written in the process about what, what would happen to that mascot, you know, in case the na, the name were to be changed? Because in this case, the mascot is a bit related, related to the name of the school. And is that something that the board has any say over, or is that more of the school's discretion, or just kind of in that area with the mascot, what would happen to that?
So the policy doesn't talk about the mascot of the school, that is usually operationally what, what the school does internally. I think if there was any changes, that is something that the school can, can, community can come together, and there's a process to, to do that, but it's not at the policy level of the board.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, and for example, that Smallwood felt very strongly that they wanted to retain the same mascot, to your point. So, yeah, but in this case, because they are so closely tied, that's a good question, if we did decide to do that. Yes, Mr. Hancock?
Thank you. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, thank you for the presentation. And so, as we go through this process, is there, and I don't, I don't know what the board wants to do, but is there a, a point where we can stop the process after seeing these survey results? Or can a board member request that, that we take a vote to continue, or to-
Yes, you can make a motion to not continue the process if the board, and see if there is an interest from the board not to continue the process, right?
No motion is needed at this point to move forward. And we'll continue until we receive direction from the board not to continue, if that's the interest of the board. So if there's any interest of the board to stop the process as of today, a motion can be called for today, but we're not looking for a motion to, say, continue the process, that automatically continues otherwise.
Okay, so since there, this is a work session, and we don't, I don't believe we have a place for new business or anything, when would the appropriate time for a motion like that be made?
The June, what meeting?
Chair can recognize a motion at this time, if-
At, at this time, okay.
Typically, it would be at the June work, but if, yeah, if you wanted to raise a motion, you could.
Okay.
Is that your proposal?
My proposal, yes, is just looking at the survey responses, and with the, the history in, that was provided to us a few meetings ago, I, I would like to propose that we, we stop, I'd like to make a motion that we, we stop the process of looking into changing the name of Indian Head Elementary School.
All right, is there a second, seconded by Ms. Brenda Thomas? Is there any discussion? Ms. Vice Chair Kramer?
Yep, thank you, and thank you for that, for those comments, Mr. Hancock. Yeah, I mean, the result, the results, the survey results are overwhelming, that is true. I'm just concerned about the amount of people who responded, even though it's around 200, that's still just kind of a low number for me, so that's why I'm not committed either way at this point, but I just kind of would like more time to just give the public opportunity to come out or share feedback. So I wouldn't support the motion at this time, but that doesn't mean that I, you know, I've made my mind up, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, followed by Ms., oh, I apologize, you had your hand up first, Ms. Thomas, and then Ms. Smith.
So, not related to the motion that Mr. Hancock has on the floor, but there was a, a point in the slide deck where they talked about, there was a, letters that came from the community about the renaming of the, the highway as well as the, the school, but the highway has already been changed per state, that it's now Piscataway Highway, correct?
No.
It's just a dedication, they didn't actually change it. Okay, that was my question. Okay, that's it, thank you.
My colleague was about to get a point of order, there's a motion on the floor.
But, yeah, full disclosure, she did have her hand up earlier, I forgot to-
She most certainly did.
And I wasn't sure Mr. Hancock was going to introduce his motion, so.
Mm-hmm. No, just want to second what the vice chair said, in terms of like wanting additional feedback. Totally understand and see the, the survey responses we have here, and also Mr. Tuttle's history lesson, which he so eloquently gave about the Indian Head Elementary School, and kind of where the name came from, and the history that he dug in- kind of where the name came from and the history that he dug into, is also playing in the back of my mind. But I would like to see this play out just a little further in terms of if there are additional responses that we can gather. But from what we have here today, it does seem pretty clear the community may not be interested at this time, but I am interested to see if there are other responses that come forward.
Thank you, and echo those sentiments, because what brought us here and the, the initial request to consider it, there was the very strong community voice, we received a lot of people actually came out in person and testified in favor of, of changing. So I'm thinking the same, I'd like to give people the opportunity, we've started the process, you know, let's have people come out, whichever way they're leaning. So that would be my preference as well. Any other questions or comments? All right, there is a motion on the floor to stop the process of renaming and has been seconded, all in favor of stopping the process, please raise your hand. Three, okay, and opposed. All right, so, and are you abstaining, Dr. Small? Okay, all right, so we will continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up, Mr. Heim, Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Can you read the whole thing in line?
Yes.
He's a little cranky, we've been here all day. I know.
I thought we were saving the best for last.
I know. That's right, Mr. Heim.
Now I'm nervous. Good evening, everyone. Tonight I'm here to discuss the 2026 Educational Facilities Master Plan. I just quickly like to highlight the picture on the cover, that is Margaret Jameson Thornton Elementary School, which is the VR 23rd Elementary School in Charles County, and it is set to open in the fall for the start of the school year 25, '26. Substantial completion on that project is complete at this time. There are still some things to be completed there, you see from that picture, the final paving has not been done, so that's the base coat of asphalt you see for that drive and also for the parking lots, and then there's still some site work to be completed and then punch list items. But we are very close to going through the process to apply for the temporary UNO, Use Inocenti Permit, to officially make that our building, which would mean that Dr. King and his staff would have the ability to start moving in there. We do have permission to start receiving materials, so as of even today, some materials were starting to be delivered to the, to the building, so some materials of instruction. All right, the EFMP or Educational Facilities Master Plan, it's one of the required documents that we have to submit, or any LEA has to submit in support of their capital improvement plan. So this is the first step in that process. It'll come up during the June board meeting for an action item for approval, and then we have to submit that to the state before July 1st, again, in support of our CIP. Funds through this are approved through the, the CIP program, and you'll see the eight things which are included as the first part of the EFMP. It includes grade organizational patterns, so it talks about the grade levels that we have pre-K, and even includes our three-year-old programs going up until, till 12th grade. It includes student-staff and ratios, it includes transportation policies, it includes tenant zones, redistricting policies, school closing policies, it includes our programs of study to include gifted education services, special education programs, CET programs, which we heard a lot about this evening, and educational support policies. Additional documents are included to support this EFMP. We have to have a letter from the Maryland Department of Planning. Each spring, the MDP, Maryland Department of Planning submits their 10-year enrollment projections to us, we have to review those and analyze those against our 10-year projections. We submit a letter. If we are more than 5%, either greater or less than their numbers, and we have to support original, additional documentation to that. Our le, uh, numbers for the next 10 years are within that 5% range, so we've actually submitted that to the state, and we received back their letter, letter of approval, which we included in this. We'll have a letter from our local planning department, which includes the plan and growth management in the county who support our, our CIP, so we're in the process of working with Jake Dyer and his staff on that letter. Third, we receive a letter or resolution from the LEA certifying it accepts our plan, that would be your approval hopefully in the June board meeting. And then lastly, it includes a inclusion of the nondiscrimination statement staying, signed by our LEA and the board. Additional material you'll see within this document is a facilities inventory, which includes current projects and future projects. So it talks about each school, the year it opened, any additions, any major renovations that occurred to those buildings. It also includes a community analysis, which includes county historical background, demographics, birth data, projected population, growth management, land use, tax information, and the adequate public facilities information, which ironically tomorrow we'll be sharing that, the county will be sharing it with us during the commissioners meeting tomorrow on the school seat allocations. Third includes student enrollment projections, I mentioned we have 10-year projections included within this document. And then lastly, it has facility needs, which programs out over the next five years, our project schedules, include project descriptions, which involves systemic renovations and maps where those schools are located. I know, went through that quickly. The entire document is posted on Board Docs for the, the view in public, but we just wanted to highlight the major components of the EFMP without getting into too many details, but at this point I will address any questions that the board may have.
That was for you, Mr. Hancock, that presentation time.
Yes, yeah, he cut that down, he had 15 minutes, he did it in like five.
Questions or comments? Oh, there we go. All right, Ms. Smith and then Ms. Thomas.
This is a very brief question, even three years in, I still get confused, so I'll be very clear with my, my question. How do we calculate the projections for student enrollment?
So we start as the basis of looking at the September 30th enrollment. So when we did our enrollment projections for school year 25, '26, we wait until September 30th until George Sims goes through verifying those numbers, who also goes through a verification through the state. So that's our basis, then what we do is we matriculate those students up. So we take K students and move them to first grade, and so on down through 11th graders through 12th grade. Then what we'll do is we add, looking at the schools where we have growth, we'll add growth to that based upon numbers we get from the, the county. So we all rely a lot on the county as well for projects that are occurring currently, but also future projects. And then you do have to allow for, for some of those grades, particularly with eighth grade and, and ninth grade, we sometimes see with, with the ninth grade, even though it's a, a matter of the number of credits they have, we typically see a higher number of ninth graders that are sometimes retained based upon, they're not really retained because they, you know, they're, they move up, but they're, in terms of the number of credits they have, they're still considered a ninth grader. So we have to take that in consideration, we have to take into consideration with the eighth graders, and sometimes some of the eighth graders are not promoted to, to high school, so we leave a little bit of numbers within those eighth graders. And we also look at, the most difficult part is looking at your incoming pre-K and K, because not all of our students who are in, end up being kindergarten ultimately attend pre, or pre-K year, and same thing with the pre-K kids are coming into the school system for the first time. So we have to rely a lot on Maryland's numbers, on birth rate numbers for those early, early numbers. And then, you know, a tough thing is you look, if you look at our 10-year projections, it's very difficult to predict, you know, what can happen eight, nine, 10 years down the road, so things that can happen such as, you know, when we were looking at these numbers in 2018, it was very difficult for us at that time to predict that we'd have a global pandemic, and COVID had a very big impact, not only on our school system, but school systems around the country and the state of Maryland, with the number of kids who were attending public school. So you also have to factor in kids who may come into our school system from, from, you know, private schools, or kids who may leave our school system for, for homeschooling and those things. So it's, I'm going to be quite clear with the board, it's not an exact science. You use the various metrics that are out there, but there is some, you know, leeway with that where, you know, which, you know, counts for those differences, what we see and what we actually project and what we actually end up having attend our school system.
No, that's really helpful, Mr. Heim. You mentioned future projects, I'm always curious with all of the development going on throughout our county, how we project the number of kids that will, or families that will move into those developments, and like what range are their kids in? We have no clue, they haven't moved in yet. So I'm always curious like how we discern based on those developments, you may have 10 elementary schoolers, 20 middle schoolers, you know, eight high schoolers, like how do we kind of get that range to go?
That's where that collaboration between the school system and planning and growth management with the county come into play, so we share our enrollment numbers with this, and again, they use that data for upcoming projects that are approved or soon to be approved, which will be issued school seats. And they develop what's called yield factors, so we look at yield factors, so you look at yield factors on three different housing types, single-family homes, townhomes, and then multi-dwelling homes, apartments. We typically see with, with all three of those, single-family townhomes and multifamily dwellings, that we see a higher yield amongst the elementary rate. So we see with, with folks moving into the county, they typically have more children at the elementary age than they do at the middle and high school. And then your yield factors are typically a little bit higher in middle school than elementary, and the lowest yield factors are usually at the high school level.
Thank you.
And we'll be discussing that tomorrow, so if the public has more of an interest in school seat allocation process, it's on the agenda tomorrow with the county commissioners and myself, and, and we have our chair, Mrs. Moore Lee, and our vice chair, Mrs. Kramer, will be participating along with Dr. Navarro, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith answered my, asked my question, so thank you for that, and you get, went into more detail because my question was going to be about the seat allocation and how it's happening with the commissioners, because I know lots of parents, I've seen chatter in the comments about what's happening to the excise tax that people are paying and all those kind of things, so thanks for the plug that, you know, maybe the public needs to tune in to find more about that, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Heim.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
We're going to let you off a little easy today, Mr. Heim. All right, next up we have two, right, we have two action items. The first is the English Language Development, ELD curriculum. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Ms. Kramer, vice chair, seconded by Ms. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Next is the Social Studies Curriculum, which we heard the presentation on this evening. Is there a motion to approve?
All right, motion to table.
You'd like the table?
I, the things that I heard tonight, I'm sorry, the things that I heard tonight were a little concerning, and I, I don't, I'm, I'm not going to say whether the text is the best text or not, but I would like to wait for a response from the publishers. We asked for a couple of things from the publishers, I think just to, to give it some time to see whether or not those things can be decided upon, particularly with the removal of the, the role-playing, I, I, I think it's an easy remove if, if they could, but if nothing else, I'd like to see, you know, what response we can get from the publishers.
Chair, I'm going to try contacting this week, we have a response for the next time.
I don't want to delay, I know you guys have to prepare for, you know, next school year, but some of those things were a little dis, you know, concerning to me, and I just want to see if they're willing to work with us in order to make sure that we have something that's best for the students.
So would you like me to bring it back at the next June board meeting, or?
One, one second, Mr. Lowndes, is there a second? Oh, yes, okay, by vice chair, okay, and then we can.
Didn't need to jump on that.
Yeah, no, no worries, I just want to make sure that there is a second, and yes, you had a question about whether to.
Would you like me to bring it back at the next board meeting, a June board meeting as an action item?
Hold that thought one second, we'll, we'll vote, go ahead, did you want to, part of discussion, go ahead.
I wanted to ask if it pleases the board, if we could look at our neighboring counties to see exactly, you know, what they're using, we don't have to get the same thing, but we are seeing a vicinity of what they using, so we have a choice of, you know, better material, less materials or what, but we have something to discuss.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I would be in agreement with that. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, oh, did you have something to say?
And I'm going to vote in agreeance with this, but I just, a question, when is, when would you have, when would a decision on textbooks have to be decided by?
Before July 1, or otherwise, Miss Acton would, so I have the money now in the budget, and I have to spend it before July 1. But I understand if it's not to write textbook and it's not one that you're comfortable with, then we would hold off.
So if that were to happen.
I'd rather write textbook where everyone's comfortable than to spend money where people are not comfortable with the textbook.
So if that, say, say this didn't get resolved by July 1, would you move forward in the next year with current curriculum that you already have?
Correct, we'd use the same materials that were.
So that's a worst case scenario?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then we would trust that maybe there's an intercategory change, or some of you get your money back, Mr. Lowndes? There wouldn't be, no. Miss Acton's like, use or lose.
You say you, you use it or lose it?
Say we go to somewhere else, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of tableing? All right, that is unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll add that, just brace yourselves, colleagues, don't complain when June is long. We have a lot to discuss. All right, Ms. Brenda Thomas.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second, Ms. Smith? All right, all in favor? All right, please take us off the air. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you.